We are recording.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Hopkinton School Board meeting for Thursday, December 3rd, 2020. We have a full board with us here tonight with Norm Gupel, Rob Nato, Seth A-Frame, Andrea Folsom, myself, Jim O'Brien, and we're joined by, with Mia Richter, our student rep, onto the board. And then we also have Michelle Clark, our business administrator and our superintendent, Mr. Steve Chamberlain, joining us this evening. Oh, and our other student rep just hopped on to the screen, Juliette Chahade. So thank you. Thank you all for joining us this evening. We will start with the pledge of allegiance and I saw Steve practicing and putting the flag picture up.
So can you see that?
Not yet. There it is.
Can you see the building?
We can.
So this is the building today, but they came late, so the flag wasn't up. But I want you to at least see the building because this is what it was two weeks ago.
That's great.
And this is what, so they've done a lot of work, but this is the one we will salute because that actually has a flag.
Steve, do you want to lead us?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Steve, do you want to toggle between those two pictures again? That's great.
Absolutely. So that's today at three thirty. That's why it wasn't the flag up. But isn't that nice? All that. And I'll get one with the flag next time. But look at the work that's been done in just a couple weeks.
That's great. It's great. It's wonderful to see progress. I like this idea of showing these at every meeting. It's, because I don't get down there very often. So it's good to see the progress.
I will try and catch the flag next time, but we'll be all right.
Um, so we are meeting once again, fully remotely. We're, we've had a good straight string of meeting remotely since March. And we get to do so because of the governor's emergency declaration and emergency orders related to the COVID-19 pandemic. Those emergency orders allow for public bodies such as the Hopkinton School Board to meet completely remotely. So there's no physical location for this meeting this evening. But we have posted this meeting with links, Zoom links, in order for the public to be able to observe and participate in this meeting. So all the other requirements of RSA 91A, which is the state's open meeting guidelines are being followed. So there'll be minutes taken of this meeting and those minutes will be available to the public under the statutory deadlines. And then this meeting is also being recorded and will be posted on to the school district website so that anybody who misses parts of the meeting or wants to go back and re-watch it are able to do so. And then the only other requirement that we'll be following tonight, that's a little bit different than our regular meetings, is all of our votes are going to be roll call votes. And so it takes a little bit longer. But just so everybody who's watching understands that we'll be doing roll call votes for every vote this evening. Think I got it all there. So thank you all for being patient with us as we continue remote. I'll just say the, we do have two public comment portions during these meetings. So we'll have one in a little bit towards the top, and then there's another public comment portion towards the end of the meeting. And I'll give instructions for how you can let us know that you have public comment that you wish to provide. So with that, are there any additions or deletions from the agenda tonight, Steve?
We are gonna, because of the, just the packed nature of the agenda, we're going to table the calendar discussion until next week. We have a couple of meetings for that. It just has to be approved by the last meeting in December. So we're okay. And it'll give us a little more fluid approach to the budget.
Great. Thank you, Stephen. As you mentioned, the calendar was included in the, the meeting materials for tonight. So if there's any questions or if anybody in the public wishes to comment on that, we'll take comments, but we'll have a more thorough discussion and presentation on that next week. Any correspondence, Steve?
There were a significant number of correspondence in the folder. So hopefully the board caught all those.
And thanks to them, public, for, for sending us a lot of their thoughts this week. So we have a number of, well, we have three minutes to approve. And so I would ask if there's a motion from the Hopkinton School Board to approve the minutes of the public hearing regarding the acceptance of federal funds, which was held on November 19th, 2020.
I'm also.
Second.
Is there any discussion on those minutes? All right. Seeing none. Norm?
Norm Gupel is a yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato is a yes.
Seth?
Seth A-Frame, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. Is there a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to approve the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on November 19th, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on those? Seeing none. Norm?
Norm Gupel is a yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato is a yes.
Seth?
Seth A-Frame, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. And finally, is there a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to approve the minutes of the non-public portion of the regular school board meeting held on November 19th, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on those? Seeing none. Norm?
Norm Gupel is a yes.
Rob?
Rob Nato, yes.
Seth?
Seth A-Frame, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Folsom, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. So this brings us to our first public comment portion of the evening. And so I would just ask if you are an attendee watching, if you move your cursor down towards the bottom of your screen, there should be a button that you can press that says, raise your hand. And if you click on that, that alerts us here that you have a comment to make. And so I would just ask when we calling you to make your public comment, that you just state your name and your address, and then provide your comment. So the first hand that was raised is Ian Tewksbury. Good evening, Ian. Thanks for joining us.
Good evening. Thank you very much for taking my comment. Very quickly, some of you may or may not be aware that in the last 24 hours, the CDC has changed their guideline from 14 days to 10 days for quarantine. And then this afternoon, the governor adopted that as well. And I would just encourage, I'm not sure if that's a superintendent thing, if that's a school board thing, or how that's going to work, because I know you guys only have your meetings twice a month, or, or however the schedule goes. But I would love to, you know, encourage the adoption of that similar program. Not sharing what protocols you guys would have to, hoops you would have to jump through. But the fact that everybody, the other, the two main bodies have changed it would be wonderful if we were able to follow those same guidelines to reduce what the teachers have to do, what the students have to do with athletics coming up and a variety of different things like that. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ian. Steve, I saw you nodding your head. So I don't know if you have anything on that.
We've already talked to some of the nurses, and I think our MOA just says we follow guideline, approved guidelines. So I don't, I think that was our language. So I don't think there's a lot of hoops to run through to adopt that, if my memory serves.
Perfect. Thank you, Steve. So the next hand is Beth Mayland.
Hi, this is Beth Mayland's husband, Dennis Molnar.
Dennis, how are you?
55 Briar Hill Road. Thanks for everyone. Hope everyone had a good Thanksgiving. Just in advance of any discussions about winter sports and making them happen, just wanted to put a plug in to, to encourage the board to find a way to make all winter sports happen. I think we did a superb job as a district figuring out how to make it happen in the fall. And obviously, well, many people may not know that we adopted a little stricter version of participation for coaches and players and bus, using buses and where we would play than many school districts. And I felt like having children play field hockey and soccer in the fall, that we did a very good job of sticking to those restrictions, holding other teams to it, to the coach, to the player, to the team throughout the fall. And I know that there are many places that are playing winter sports or plan to play winter sports and have found a way to do so safely. And I think we can definitely do the same here in Hopkinton. And I would just encourage the board to think about it from the perspective of if we don't offer scholastic athletics, many athletes, particularly, I'll speak for ice hockey, but I know a bunch of basketball players who feel the same way. If they don't have a school option, they'll be playing privately in clubs at a much broader geographic area with a much broader group of teammates, not from the town or necessarily even the county. And of trying to avoid spread through not offering scholastic athletics is only going to make our athletes go and look for ways to play outside of our school district where the board and the community doesn't have any control over the standards that they play under. And that's coming from someone whose children play hockey, and there was a real problem with adapting hockey restrictions throughout New England, including in New Hampshire, early in the fall. Feel like they've gotten that under control and that there's a way to do so safely. So just encouraging the board to, to be creative and have a can-do attitude. And thanks for all your help.
Dennis, thank you so much. Appreciate your comment. Um, next, Tammy Clay. Hi, Tammy.
Oh, am I there?
You're here.
So was that, um, Mayland? So it showed up on the, Tammy, instead of Tammy Clay talking, it said that it was Beth Mayland, not Molnar. So is that going to be duly noted in the records of who was actually speaking?
Yes, it was, it was Dennis Molnar that was speaking.
Thank you. I'll talk to you later about that, too. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay, thank you, Tammy. And then next hand is Elizabeth with no last name.
Hey, I do have a last name, Elizabeth Sides.
I figured you would.
265 Crowell Road. I just wanted to call in quickly and say, as a, you know, a family of three remote learners here, it's been a wonderful experience. And I know that a lot of you hear all the negative stuff about people that are unhappy with hybrid. I, I just can't say enough about what a positive experience fourth grade, second grade, and pre-K has been for our family. And I just want to kind of, you know, give a shout out to those teachers because I don't think they get enough credit. And I just hear so many parents complaining, and I get it that this is a really, really hard time. I'm not downplaying that at all. But there are bright spots here. And, you know, our kids are thriving. And I say that really kind of hesitantly because I know a lot of kids aren't. And I'm aware of that. But I also want, you know, the school board to know. I want the teachers to know that a lot of parents are really happy because we made a big sacrifice to keep our kids home. And, you know, for our kids, it, it works. And that's all because of the teachers. You know, Trish Roberts, Barb Jenkins for fourth grade, Meredith Post for second, and Kenda Beckwith for pre-K. They're amazing. And we should really recognize them, I think, more than we do. So I want to thank them. And I want to thank the district and the school board for giving them what they need. So, you know, I, I just, I, I think that that's, I think a lot of the remote parents feel that way. And I don't think, you know, people really say that, that we are happy and we're grateful for them. And then just a quick thing about winter sports, our kids are not playing winter sports. So I really don't have, you know, um, it doesn't really matter to me in terms of my kids playing or not. But what the gentleman just said about how successful fall sports were, yeah, my kids played fall sports with masks. It was outside. It was fantastic. That was outside. We're talking about inside basketball. And I, my kids aren't playing regardless, even if they did have the opportunity. One year for them is not, it's not a disastrous situation for us. I get it for the high school. I think that's a different situation, middle, high school. I'm glad my kids aren't old enough to make that decision, to have to make that decision. But I understand those kids. You know, with basketball, I just, kids are already playing at Bowfield House in other leagues, even when, you know, even if you guys decide that all winter sports is a go, people are still going to play in other leagues regardless. They're still doing, you know, they're, they're doing it. They've been doing it. So that's already here. I just wanted to put that out there. But I think it's not a great idea, but it's not my call and I don't have a kid doing it. So we're taking the, the winter off because that's what to us makes most sense to us. Anyways, I just wanted to say all that. And thank you so much to all of you. I know this is really hard. We appreciate you. We appreciate Steve. We appreciate everyone. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. So I don't have any other hands up for public comment. And as I mentioned at the top, we have another opportunity for public comment towards the end of the meeting. And so for now, I'm going to close the public comment. And then the next item is comments from the Hopkinton School Board. And so maybe, maybe before I ask the school board to start, I'll ask our student reps to start this evening, if either Mia or Juliette have anything they want to, they want to add in for comment.
I don't think I have anything.
Yeah, me neither. I.
All right, no problem. So open, open to any school board member who wants to start.
Sure. I'll start. I just, I hope everyone had a fantastic Thanksgiving. You know, it was a nice relaxing with just the family and having a nice turkey meal here. So I hope everyone in the community had a really good Thanksgiving. Real quickly, I just want to say, you know, tonight's a big night. You know, we just, we talk about our budget. And I really encourage the community to watch this budget for the beginning and throughout the whole process. You know, this is going to be completely done online, in person. Everyone's going to have the opportunity to ask questions and really understand how this budget is put together. I want to thank Steve and Michelle for all the work they did to bring to us tonight. I know it's a lot of work. I know it's difficult times that's going on in our, in our world with the public health crisis. But I really want to say to the community, please stay engaged. Ask questions, ask questions throughout this whole process, and we will do our best to answer them. So thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Norm.
I'll pop on quick. I wanted to, similarly to Norm, and seeing as we just passed Thanksgiving, I did just want to give a big thanks to a lot of folks, to our community. It was great to get Steve's note about all that Dimitris did, all the, the meals that were delivered and all the ways that this community stepped up. And I think it really highlights the care in our community. It's something that I just really love about it. That was really, those notes are a highlight of my week. I also wanted to give a big thank you to our parents, guardians, and caretakers for being flexible. I know that this has been a really tough year, and I appreciate that flexibility. I want to thank our teachers for also being flexible and really stepping up day after day in a variety of situations. I know oftentimes we sort of focus on what's not always going right. But I do want to echo that so much more is going right than is not. And you're doing an amazing job. And we do see and appreciate you, even if we don't see it enough. I also wanted to thank our leadership team, just thank Steve and our principals and our nurses. I think you all are, I don't know how you aren't all like full white at this point, because it's been so stressful. And I really, really appreciate all that you guys have done. And I thank you to our kids. You know, they're the ones who are really in there every day, who are living history. And whatever age you're at, I'm, I don't think that you'll ever forget this year for better or for worse, unfortunately. So I just wanted to start this meeting off with a bit of gratitude and thanks before we head into problem solving mode. So, thank you.
Andrea? Seth or Rob?
I'm a no for tonight. Thanks, Jim.
You're welcome. Seth?
I'll just say, I've been sitting at my kitchen table about 10 feet away from both an eighth grader and an 11th grader. And I had to do the same thing in the spring. And I'll just say to the teachers, you're really doing a great job. I mean, you are, you know, it was represented by, I think Rebecca, that technology would be different and things would be more engaging. And I am seeing that. So, you know, as I do my own work and, you know, sort of overhear what's going on, I just want to say that I can tell the effort and the creativity that's being put in. And this is not optimal. It's not going to be optimal. But since we made the change, I'm seeing, you know, a really good product, given the limitations. And I'm really happy to see that.
Thanks, Seth. And I, I sort of just want to echo, I think, a little bit of what you all said. Thanks, thanks to our teachers and our staff and to the board, I think, for, for the time and effort we've all been putting in. And then I think to echo Norm, you know, this, this is the beginning of, of, you know, I think one of the, one of our real responsibilities here to the community as a board, which is to put together and, and work to pass an operating budget. It's, it's one of our major tasks, and it's not an easy one. And I think, you know, last year was hard, and this year is going to continue to be a challenge. And so, so this is sort of a preemptive thank you for the work that we're going to do over the next, over the next several weeks as we meet weekly to, to discuss the budget and to, what I think is going to be making some really challenging decisions to present to the community. So, so this is sort of a first step, but I, I think it's a pretty big first step. So thanks all for, 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 you know, don't be afraid to share your thoughts. That's probably the right thing to say. Appreciate it. So with that said, we're going to move on to presentations and staff reports, and I'm going to hand it over to Steve for the presentation of the superintendent's budget. Thank you, Steve.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate it. And just appreciate the opportunity to present the FY22, the superintendent's budget. We're at that stage of the process. Can everybody see that slide? Okay, just want to make sure.
Sure can.
Great. So each year, I've actually, for, this is my 12th superintendent and six, for the last 18 years, I've chosen a theme for every year. I don't know if anybody can remember last year's a little quiz, but it was one word. It was about reflection and all that this year because it is my last opportunity to present the FY or the school district budget. And this year, I just really wanted to highlight gratitude. And I thank you to Elizabeth and Andrea and Jim for the gratitude shown and Norman and every, the incredibly grateful for the opportunity to serve as assistant principal. Rob, I remember that a long time ago, and principal for six years and superintendent for the last 12. It was Kim Fuller and Arby and Deb, Deb Young and Joy and Ed Kaplan that brought me here 22 years ago, as a assistant principal. I like, my son was six months old. He's now 22, becoming a teacher. My daughter wasn't born when I came. She was born my first year as principal. So extraordinarily grateful and grateful to the community for the incredible support, financial support, personal professional support, always the leadership team incredibly grateful to work with what I think us with the finest educator and people, the teachers gratitude for their work on this budget. And, and again, the community, we've always been, we talk about stewardship of the public dollar and that huge responsibility because we know that for many people coming to Hopkinton and supporting the schools is, is a huge important decision. That's a hardship for many. And we try to take that responsibility and stewardship seriously. So just from my, my last time doing this, excuse me, incredibly grateful for the opportunity this district has provided. So I've always been, going back, a mission-driven leader, whether it's been the principal or the superintendent, and the budget is an integral part in supporting that mission. And so I always talk about our mission of care. We want to have enough resources and enough capacity to fulfill our mission. And we've talked about this, actually, we had a presentation, I think, earlier in this board's tenureship. But again, the budget supports a mission and the budget supports goals. So our mission is to care. And we have four goals about ensuring learning, believing that the Hopkinton students and the Hopkinton community deserves best practice. That's our goal. High school plus, this notion is we're not just graduating students with a diploma, but with real skills, concepts, and understanding so they can achieve a post-secondary academic institution or certification specialized area, whether that's plumbing, or HVAC, or electricity, or make sure they're accepting the armed services. This whole notion about high school plus came at a time where a high school diploma and real skills was your entry into a job with health insurance. And remember, early in my superintendent, he talked about the life expectancy of those with high school diplomas and without. So it's always been important that we graduate students with real abilities and certifications and concepts. And we're always trying to raise the bar and close the gap for all our students. So I always like to frame our work and how does it support our goals and how does it support our mission. So one of the things that is, is really come to me in my 12 years as superintendent is the amount of regulation that we have. So it's, you know, I have got emails before, Steve, why can't you just cut here? Or why can't you do this? I sat with someone about, why can't we just cut special ed? Why can't we just cut this? Or why can't you reduce? And we are extraordinarily highly regulated, whether it's federal law, which is IDEA, ESS, the Affordable Care Act, labor laws. We have, Michelle and I, we, when we get the call for labor department audit, or our retirement system audit, our, our, you know, our stomachs drop, but we're incredibly regulated. So the notion that a superintendent or board that we can simply come in and wave a wand to do something that really isn't accurate, because we have to stay within guidelines. We have state laws, RSA minimum standards. We have fire code. Like, we've had to spend significant, you know, over my time meeting fire code funds. The collective bargain agreements talks about how we can work with staff and compensation of staff and, and benefits of staff, and of course, district policy. So I always liked this slide because everything doesn't, nothing happens in a vacuum. Everything is interconnected. And we have to make sure we abide by policy, by contract, and by law. So we started, so one of the things that Michelle and I, and we meet with all the, the buildings and the departments. And the first thing I talked about is what impact did the pandemic have on this budget? In, in their budgeting. And it's very difficult. One of the questions is, we don't, you know, we, we started just, we started the budget in October. And Michelle and I got into it in, in, you know, late October, November, we met with faculty. So the biggest thing is, we just don't know, Steve. And so a couple of things, we did maintain the structure of shared, one of the things, and, and I very much appreciate the time that the finance committee spent trying to provide the information to the community. And we're going to drill down into a further level than we have in the past. And that's going to raise some questions. For example, we're going to, we're going to show some things like in first grade. Well, this year, we have a combination first grade kindergarten because of remote learning. And we have a combination four or five because of remote learning. So it's not always apples to apples. But we did maintain that structure. We did, we, we added, if you remember, a permanent sub position because to support the pandemic and quarantining. And, and so that position's been integral this year, but it's not in the budget going forward. The remote learning support positions are FTEs in the budget that now we're supporting, but they will be quickly, can be transferred to academic classroom support when we're in that model next year. And we'll talk more about this. But as a placeholder and where we think we are, there's about $100,000 in PP for next year. And we'll talk about where that is. So we spent a lot of time talking about the pandemic, thinking about it, but there's so many unknowns. But I don't want you to think that, oh, we developed FY22 without at least having meaningful discussions about it. Everybody okay? Just keep going. So this is our work. The budget supports certainly. But one of the things that I've always appreciated is the charge in the Hopkinton School District. And one of our tenets is continual improvement and to keep moving. You know, it's clear, when the board hired me 12 years ago, part of my evaluation is how do I move, how do I move the administrators and move this district? And this is our effort. So we're continually do UDL, Universal Design for Learning. We're into the responsive classroom. One of the things, I was looking back two years ago, when we were in the advocacy point of the facility project, what a huge role NIASK played in our discussions. If you remember, we brought in represented from the New England Association of Schools and Colleges and had a whole board meeting about NIASK and the warning system regarding the facility project. So NIASK is there. The NOSTER Change Model is a, is an absolute essential piece of my work. We have John Hattie's work of evidence-based learning. Mentoring is still important. And of course, the thing that I believe in one of the most is our magnificent seven in our work with new teachers. So this is the work that continues. And I did add COVID-19 because, of course, that's part of our work. But all this is happening simultaneously as we move through what the budget supports. So a couple of, you know, how are we doing is one of the questions, right? How are we doing? And typically, we have a state testing, but of course, that state testing didn't happen last year because of COVID. We still did have AP tests and. We still did have AP tests and yeah, 75% of our kids, as I presented to the board, performed three or better, which is better than state average in that metric. And last year, 95% of our students went to a two or four-year college, including, I didn't put it in, but 83% of our special education students did as well. And which is a great, great number. So, and when we have the state testing, I'm happy to bring that forward. But on many indicators, we're doing well. One of the things if someday, some Steve, what didn't you get to in your 12 years as soup? And one of the things I always wanted to do was to measure postgraduate happiness. Um, I, I spent a lot of time talking with kids and doing workshops and one of the, and I spent actually time talking with my daughter recently about the goal is happiness. We want, I mean, my goal is for my daughter to become a, a happy, productive member. And how are we doing on the happiness factor? Our kids picking careers and preparing. I had a discussion with a student who, who college wasn't for him. Uh, we were actually trying to put together a whole push this year about trades and a workshop and he's incredibly happy. And though the college path wasn't happiness for him, but he's incredibly happy and incredibly productive. And maybe someday we'll get a chance to measure the happiness factor and what we're doing. Let's see. So a little bit, just some foundation stuff, like nuts and bolts enrollment. We know about 80 to 90, 82%, 78%, 82% of our budget is staffing. And what contributes to staffing the most is our enrollment. Um, we have an April of 2020 report. We just recently got the updated report today. I haven't got a chance to dig in. And when we need to update the slides, but we're predicted Harold's down a little bit in the projection, Maple's up a little. The middle school is pretty flat and the high school's down a little. And that was always, I mean, one of our couple of years, we got down to eight eighty-eight. And I think that was as low as we got. We've got over a thousand and what's, you know, our state aid is tied to each student. But just because you lose one student, doesn't mean you lose any expense with that student, except maybe I always used to say it's a ream of paper. Because unless all 20 kids were one class and you can reduce all the personnel associated with that class, there really isn't a, you know, correlation between one student here. But the, the, the state aid is based on that one student. So because some people say, Steve, you're down two students. Well, we can't obviously have a class. If you lose a class because of two students and what about Harold? We're down 26? Well, if they were in one grade, we would. But spread out over five, it really isn't, you know, practicals, but that's our enrollment, um, projection. Everybody okay? So one of the things that people are interested, the section count, where are we in this budget for section count? Um, and there's a couple of wild cards and there's going to be wild cards as we go through this because of the choices that people have made for families. Like Ms. Seid's talked about the choice that she made for her family. Well, she made the remote, but other people are making homeschool choices and things like that. So in this budget, it's a four at kindergarten. Um, a, uh, four at first grade, a four at second grade and a four at third grade. Now you might look, uh, how come we're at four at 59? Well, we have eight homeschool students and one private school student and those typically we don't have that many homeschool students in one grade. And so we, we, and if, if things go as we think, the, we would be ready for those youngsters to come back. We get up to 67, 68 and we typically have growth during the year. This is where we talk about risk mitigation. In the past, Jim, I think you remember when we were doing this, we had the contingency fund for some of these unknowns. And we sometimes backfill half. But so it's something to think about. But in this budget, the soup budget is for third grades because of the homeschool and the private school count. Uh, four sixty-two is a three third, uh, sorry, three fourth grades. You with me? That's a sixty-two count in fourth grade. Seventy-three is a strong four and seventy is a strong four and six. So if you were going backwards, we had four fourths last year and three sixths. So it's a reallocation, um, but it's the same number of FTEs as Amy was very clear with me when we talked about this. Um, everybody okay on the section count in the, in the elementary middle?
Yeah, I am. I'm just wondering, Steve, um, it may, this is probably for a future, a future discussion or future me. I'm just, I, I would, it would be great to be able to see, um, you know, I, I now know how to do it, but I'm just thinking of like a spreadsheet, you know, like grade two, how many students, um, and on the right term is, but have left, you know, have left the district to go either homeschooling, um, during, you know, during this year, during the pandemic. So it would just be interesting again to see, um, what those numbers look like in, in each grade. Cause, um, and just having those, because I do think, you know, when you see the third grade fifty-nine and four, I, I totally understand what you, how you explained it. It makes sense to me. But having those numbers, I think would be helpful for the community to see as well.
No, it's a great question. And I know Donna's online and one of the things she takes to do's after this. So Donna will keep track of our to do and we'll bring that to the next meeting because, uh, we have that data. And the sixty-six is asterix for kindergarten because that's projected. That's one of our, where we don't have great previous year knowledge. We do call Emerson and we call some of the other preschools and we were trying to get data. I think that's one of the things I'm going to miss Christine Ball the most because there are times during the year I call her almost every day. How's kindergarten? How's kindergarten? Yeah. We were monitoring it. Bill and I have some running, running bets sometimes about how high we're going to get. So a little bit about the process and, and we've gone through this with the finance committee. So people have heard it. Um, this begins September, we open the school and then thank you to the teachers who in a very busy time dig in. And we believe in site-based management, those closest to the budget begin the implementation process. What do they need? And this year the direction was, uh, was to get pretty close to flat. Um, that doesn't, you know, if, if, if there was a critical piece of equipment that was necessary during the program that wasn't going to make it, it's in, but we did cut around that to keep it pretty close. And I'll show you the, some of the end results. Um, we do three-year averages for maintenance and for utilities. Um, that's October, November. Um, it's the principal's leadership team. We go at it pretty good. Um, and now we're in the December operating budget tonight, December third. Next week, um, we'll talk about revenue, about trusts, about, you know, if there were revisions to the operating budget. Um, on the seventeenth, we tried to put it together with a draft warrant and the tax rate. That is the night, oh, we combined the operating budget with a tax rate and you get a first look. And then either on the 22nd, because I think we didn't want to do it on the 24th. So on the 22nd, we could slide in a meeting or if people wanted to sleep about, asleep and, and, and work, we could go January seventh. But that's about it for the end. We have to have a budget because six days later, we are presenting to the budget committee, right? Mr. Gupel fired up for that? Um, and then we've got the budget committee, the thirteen, twenty and twenty-seventh, and then the big public hearing on the 10th. So if you don't have those in your calendars yet, you might want to throw those in there. And then, um, we're, we're talking about March thirteenth as the tentative, we, we have a sub, you know, a can trom and Norm and I working together. We just haven't had a chance to meet. Um, but that's our process. Everybody okay? So let's talk about where we are staffing. And again, staffing is the most important piece. It's the most, uh, is the highest percentage of the budget. Um, so in Harold Martin, as I said, we have an additional third grade. That's 59 kids, one private and eight home. And that's why this, the, the risk there. Um, I, the suit, I did put back with, with a great support of Bill and Amy, the numeracy assistant. Um, we reduced it. And one of the reasons it's critical, um, it's always critical, but I would say the sense of urgency is because of the impact of our educational models and math being developmental. And the really, we would like to have Jess Pinkering and an assistant full-time in each building at least times to support the math development. Um, the numer, the, the math work with some of the work in my earlier, the superintendency, it was data-driven. Um, where our literacy scores were compared to our math scores, the literacy model, we copied with the specialist and support model. And so the numeracy assistant is in the, uh, budget. We also had Harold. We have an, an additional student-centered instructional assistance that we need there. Teachers, uh, as I told you, it's really a net zero, um, because we have added a four, uh, we added a six, but we reduced four. You with me? We went three fours and four sixths. Everybody okay? We have a share of the numeracy assistant. Those are shared between both schools and we have a, a student necessary instructional assistance at Maple. Those are the additional staffing at, at the elementary schools in the soup budget. Everybody okay?
Steve, uh, oh, go ahead, Andrea.
Sorry. Can I ask a quick question?
Please.
Steve, when you say that there is a, a student need instructional assistant, um, is that based on like an, an IAP or a five oh four that, so this is a, like a, basically a legally binding
Correct.
thing that we must provide.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, can you give a quick go back to the, the adding the third at Harold Martin and having three and fourth at Maple? I mean, the numbers are really close. So I'm just, if you could just articulate again, why four for third grade, but only three for fourth grade and what?
And then we anticipate, uh, many, if not all, um, coming back. Um, so that we up to sixty-seven because those were new homeschools and new privates. So I mean, and then, and we can plan differently, but in, in talking with Bill, the expectation is that that would get back up to about sixty-seven. And with some growth, we'd probably get up to seventy. Uh, and then, but the, um, the third, the fourth grade is, is very stable sixty-two. That's the growth from last year is pretty stable.
Thank you.
Is that okay?
Yep. That's fine.
Everybody okay?
Yes, Steve, I just want to make sure I understand. Um, and I think it's clear here, but so the, the, the Harold Martin and Maple Street are going to share the numeracy assistant. So that's a shared position, but the instructional, those are two new instructional assistant positions. It's not, they're, those aren't shared. That correct? Okay.
Perfect. Yep. Thank you. So let's go up to, um, the sections in, in the secondary. And so, and this is again, um, so we have six, we have sixty kids in seventh grade and that's a four section. And there's some history here. Chris and I spent some time. My third year as superintendent, we did talk with the community a lot about changing the middle school model. Uh, and back then it was absolutely not of any interest in the community. And so you might say, could we go to three sevens? But it is, the middle school is built on one math, one English, one social, one science. There's a certification gap there too, when a middle school versus an elementary school, which you have more flexibility. Amy had more flexibility to go to three than a secondary school, but it is in at four. That has been the educational model at seventh grade for thirty years. Probably four sevens. And just to be fair, when we had a hundred and five kids, we had four sevens. When we have seven, you know, it hasn't changed, um, because it's been the instructional model to feed a secondary program approved by, the middle school is approved by the state. But that's a four, the eighth is a four, uh, seventy-three kids in ninth grade, uh, jet, uh, ten, ninety-four and tenth, seventy-seven and eleventh and eighty-three and twelve. The reason why, uh, and we'll talk about this a little bit more, it isn't cut and dry in, we kids double up in secondary. Sometimes they take two sciences, two Englishes, three. So it's not as cut. Um, we also have a different selective elective models and different support models. So ninth grade is always divided in four. So it's much more inflexed, but middle school is pretty four, 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 four. Everybody okay? So the staffing, um, there isn't any change in staffing at the secondary level. Um, there are some, uh, additional sections that we allocate based on registration and we've had them in art, science, um, math, um, even physical, we added a, a physical education. So, um, this year, taking a look, we may be adding a, a different type of math class because of the model and where we are in, in instruction. So we need those again, we have a twelve. I mean, and I appreciate him looking at Rob because when I talk about minimums, Rob wants programmatic minimums versus enrollment minimums. And I agree, but the, so we do, um, we based on registration and, um, minimum class size. And when, when we have been very good, we don't, and, and every, every additional section is approved by the board. And with asking me questions about how many kids and why do we need it? Um, but there are some that it would be, if I just put it in science now, that would be disingenuous because we allocate where the need is. But, uh, we do need it typically science because of, for me, remember science is a hard cap. Twenty-four kids, we can't go by state requirements. Everybody okay? So let's talk about budget drivers. So there's two main budget drivers, um, that are in this budget. The first one is the, the, the building bond. Um, and it is, so this budget completes the first bond a hundred percent. Um, and, and then it also is the first portion of the second bond. You with me? Because we laddered the bonds. Um, I can't say half and half because it's not precisely half and half. So it's portions and portions. Um, the increase, um, is two hundred and, uh, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand. The total of the bond in this budget is four hundred and fourteen. So just a couple of things about the project. And, and Norm's probably sick of me, hearing me say this. So this project in April, sorry, March of two thousand and eighteen was projected to be three classrooms at Harold, no fire suppression, no teachers room at the high school, limited flooring, uh, no maintenance room at, at Maple and not as much roof work. So it was projected as a dollar fifteen all in on the tax rate. And we now, we've got additional classrooms, fire suppression, flooring, a maintenance room and teachers room and more roof work. And we are looking at, this is the biggest bump of two eighty-seven because this is the part of two bonds. Next year's budget FY twenty-three will only have as an increase, the last portion of the second bond. You with me? And if that value is the same as the first portion of the first bond, like say a hundred and fifty thousand bucks, you're getting up, say it's six hundred thousand, you're at seventy-eight cents on the tax rate. And remember this was projected to the community. I have the slide, right, Norm? I have the slide, the two thousand and nineteen slide. And it was a dollar fifteen and additional classroom and fire suppression. So you guys are sick of, I can tell you're sick of me saying it. So we're going to be at under, I want to say, and Michelle doesn't like it when I do this and ish, we're going to be under an eighty cents tax rate all in on the laddered bonds. That's twenty, thirty-five cents less than we anticipated with a lot more work. And so, but this year it's a two hundred and eighty-seven thousand hit. But that's a driver in this budget. Everybody with me?
Yeah, I think that's a great story. So thank you for sharing it. And I'm not, I'm not sick of you saying it, Steve.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate it. And now it's on tape. So it's right. We've got it recorded. The next driver is retirement. And, uh, this is, to be honest, this is chagrin for me. This is, I struggle with this one. And, and I became superintendent in, uh, two thousand and nine, ten, and the, and the state paid thirty-five percent of retirement that year. This year it's a one point seven million hit. If we got a thirty-five percent, that would be, uh, it would be a third of six hundred thousand dollars. If the, so back in two thousand and nine, they would have paid six hundred grand of this and you're going to see a budget increase that would, that would be an amazing impact on our budget. And I didn't even talk about in the first driver building aid, but anyway. So in two thousand and nine, it was thirty-five percent. Two thousand and ten, it was thirty percent. Two thousand and eleven, twenty-five percent. Uh, two thousand and twelve, no percentage, they jumped three, three point five million dollars. And that's, this is where I first met Mr. O'Brien and I love telling the story. He was on the budget committee. I'm still a young whippersnapper superintendent. And I said, the state hadn't decided yet about retirement. So we actually put retirement in a contingency fund. Michelle, do you remember that? Because we didn't know what we're going to need. And I said, there's no talk about the state zeroing it out. And Mr. O'Brien, the budget committee said they're going to zero it out. And Jim, you are absolutely correct. That year they zeroed out their contribution and they haven't given anything for retirement since two thousand and thirteen and beyond. So, um, now this is the employer contribution of fourteen percent for employees. I'm considered an employee where teachers are considered class two, which is the twenty-one percent. And there is light at the end of the tunnel in about, I don't know how many years, eighteen, Michelle, something like that. Where this will all be reset and the, and the employer contribution, well, this is catch up because in years ago, the employer contribution wasn't, um, actuarially based. So, but this is a two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollar increase and this is a two-year. It'll be two fifty-two this year and flat next year. If, they always reset it every two. Um, and this is, I was reading some of the timeline about all the lawsuits about unfunded mandates. Because, uh, we had, we don't have a choice and it's not funded. So the other one that you might be surprised not to hear from me as a budget driver is health insurance. And the reason though, even though we had about a six percent increase in GMR, we've had a lot of plan changes. We've done some staffing changes. And after all those changes, the health insurance is up about fifty thousand, which is a lot, but it's not in a driver category that Michelle and I would agree on, just isn't a driver of the budget. So the first one was, um, the facility two eighty-seven. Now you're talking two fifty-two, you're talking over those two drivers, over five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. You already caught a hundred thousand in PPE. That's six, uh, six hundred and thirty thousand dollars of the increase. You also caught a third grade teacher, you know, so I'll get going, but you're starting to see where it's going. And it, there's not a lot. I mean, there's, there's support for kids and there's base program for kids, but this is not bringing forward the most innovative budget in the world, just because this is where we are. But those are the two drivers, everybody okay? So let's talk about Harold Martin School. Bill laughed right now, I'm sure Bill's chuckling. Let's talk about Harold Martin School. Um, class size is very important, we know that. Uh, um, we know that, uh, the community, when we talk, one of the things that they're very interested in is keeping a class size for early elementary. Literacy instruction, um, I had a, I had a interview with a, a, a teacher candidate that we'll talk about later. Uh, you teach kids how to read, you change the world. Um, I was a math teacher and I love math and Amy and I love math, but teaching to read at early elementary, if kids identify themselves by third grade as readers, the rest of their educational career is absolutely extraordinary. Early application of literacy supports is about as good investment you can make, as critical you can make, and that's Harold Martin School. They do social emotional behavior and they have a strong smash specials. So the program budget, not personnel, even though I, right, I told you the personnel already, but the program budget is down about five thousand dollars, about one point nine percent. That doesn't include though, to be completely transparent, the third grade teacher and the numeracy and the instructional assistant, this is the program. This is, um, supplies, math program and things like that. Everybody okay? So they, uh, they did a good, they did, they, they cut as much as they could. Let's talk about Maple, um, again, uh, class size. Years ago, um, there was a stretch where I tried to make the argument to the Hopton School Board and the community that if we reduce sixth grade by one and, and did a curriculum coordinator, that the overall impact to education K twelve would be increased. To be completely honest with you, no one would have anything to do with that. There wasn't anyone in the audience who, who agreed with the superintendent on that at all. So we heard loud and clear that class size, uh, at our elementary schools is important. Um, again, literacy instruction, numeracy instruction, social emotional and specials. Their program budget is down four point nine, sorry, uh, four point one nine, about nine thousand dollars. That's, um, math, um, we're restructuring our math curriculum and, um, some other resource materials that we are okay on. Everybody okay about Maple Street School? The middle school, um, the middle school philosophy is give as much opportunity to try things as possible. That's the goal of the middle school, give them five unified arts, put them in FACS, put them in art, put them in music, put them in PE, put them in wellness, put them in a world language. Uh, throw as much at them as they possibly can, trying to figure out what will catch. So that's a strong middle school program is options, and that's what we have. We do provide some literacy support and academic support, we do try to do extracurriculars. And it is, um, you know, the eight-day instructional over two days with some advisory and things like that. But that's the goal of middle school, is to get kids in that seventh and eighth, thirteen, fourteen, twelve, thirteen, forty, give them try as much as they can. Everybody okay? High school, high school, we're trying to support and challenge all students. Um, the motivational theory here is elective, it's choice. It's trying to provide as much choice as students so they can take classes that they like, whether it's with us or CRTC. Um, that's the choice theory. Um, and it's funny because it's, it's might be, uh, uh, the concept is required electives. How can, I mean, how can you have a required elective? So we do categories of classes and they select within that category. Um, we have literacy and academic support, we know about our curriculum programs, we do social emotional, as we have the SAP we talked about a couple of weeks ago with YRBS. Uh, we also did project success at the, at middle school. And then again, it's the eight block. Now, and, and Chris, when I told him this slide, he was like, no way. So I want to be honest with this slide. So the program budget increase says it's up eighty-six thousand dollars, eleven point four five percent. But we've had to reclass psych because we didn't hire it. We couldn't, we haven't been able to hire a part-time psych in the last couple of years, so we have moved it over to contracted service. So it's not in personnel, but it's not really an increase because it was in, it just shows up in a programmatic budget for the high school. And CRTC, that's a Concord Regional Technical Program, is up twenty-eight thousand dollars because we've had the largest interest in CRTC in history of the school district. They've added a science, a, uh, a health science class, which is pre-med. People are interested in going to pre-med, it's, and so, and Michelle, Michelle knows and she probably thinks I'm beating a drum, but the, the state aid and federal aid on CRTC has gone down. So some of our increases, building aid, that's the driver of the bond. Um, retirement is that, and now with the CRTC, we used to get a lot more, um, support for CRTC federally that we get. So if you take out the CRTC youngsters and psych services, you're flat. So I have to be honest, I want to be transparent about that. Chris, they did a good job, they followed directions, they were just a reclass in student-based interest in CRTC. It wasn't opulence of, Steve, we're just going to add eighty-six grand and keep moving. Everybody okay?
Steve, how many students does that increase at the CRTC represent? Ish?
Oh, I'm going to say twenty seventeen.
It's twenty-nine.
I was going to go twenty-seven, so twenty-nine kids, thank you, Michelle, ding ding, have it right there.
Thank you.
That's a, so, and typically it was fifteen. So we've just about doubled it. You know.
Do you think that's because of the, do you think it's because of the pandemic, Steve, that people decided to, or is it just?
I think it's, I think it's program, I think the health sciences, a pre-med option because it, it used to be very much vocational, you know, building trades, plumbing. And, and for us, we've had some kids, but I think the pre-med type program has been a real attraction. And, but I can find out more from Chris and Rebecca, uh, about that. But, um, those are the numbers that we're looking, and, and yes, to call it out, but it's, for some kids, it is the key program. And it's something, obviously, we can't do in-house. Everybody okay? So the tech, um, I'd love, um, you know, uh, what I've learned about technology is from Matt Stone. His goal is always the right technology for the right task, efficient as possible. Always classroom access, maintain stability. And of course, now we're going to support eventually about seven hundred devices, seven hundred and thirty devices that are coming. So where are the increases? It's a, uh, rotation for administrative laptop every three or four years, it's laptops and those. Um, so that's a piece. One of the things that's changed, and, and Matt can speak to if you're interested, but we do a lot of, of now management applications and infrastructure. So the cost of the fiber is in there. Our printing service, we have a printing service contract, so we pay one printing charge for all the printers in districts. So that's a fee. We did, um, an enterprise license for Google, that's in there. So, um, my learning plan, Aspen, our, our, um, our student management system. So a lot of Matt's budget now is compulsory subscription fees, if you will, to run the foundation of our schools. And there's not, um, you know, we've got some classroom projectors at Harold Martin School. Library desktops, it's time for the rotation, some teacher laptops at Maple Street. Uh, it's really library and teacher laptops all around, a couple, some printers. Um, Matt has given some warning or heads up that our phone system at the, at the, um, in the district is going to be, um, not supported. So we have to start looking at the CIP for changing a, uh, phone system. Um, he thought because of the building project, we could start with Harold Martin School because we've going to add four classrooms and things like that, and he thought about nine thousand. And originally he had twenty-five thousand dollars for Chromebooks, but, uh, the finance committee, I think a couple of weeks ago, talked about a technology infrastructure fund of, uh, a, uh, you know, a, a accumulating fund, a tech, a trust fund, if you will. And next week, we're going to talk about, um, a district that has a pay your share piece. Rob, if you remember that, we'll talk about that next week too. So, and, and we'll, so there's not that much, obviously we're getting seven hundred and thirty devices, that's a lot for a year. Student service, I'm sorry.
Just on the technology, uh, um, what, what is the, what's the total increase in the technology? You know, you have it listed here, I just, my math isn't that good.
Not that quick. And, and the, one of the issues that this is spread out throughout, so Michelle can find that for us, but some of these are in like the high school, some of these, so some technologies sometime distributed throughout, but we can get you just the tech increase.
Okay. Can you give us kind of a number of like, how many classroom projectors are buying? You're just, I'm just kind of curious, how many, for eight thousand, like how many classrooms is it going to be? I'm just kind of curious, is there, is that too much work or just?
No, knowing Matt, he'll text me that any second. So, but once he texts, I apologize, but I'll make sure we get all these notes and we have all these answers for you next time, I promise.
All right, great.
The technology is down about twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Oh, that's right.
But, um, part of that is because twenty-five would have been in here if we would have had not a trust fund thought about because we'd want to start replacing Chromebooks. But because, so it's really shifting twenty-five, so in, in theory, I guess you could almost say the net of it, it's like two thou, you know, two thousand dollars down still, um, compared to last year.
Okay, so that's helpful. So the technology budget overall is down, um, roughly two thousand dollars, I guess. It's probably more than that right now because of the way it shifted, but, but overall, the technology budget's down by a couple thousand. Okay, thank you, that's, that, that's good to know and maybe something to include on the slide. I think, you know, when it goes on to the website, just so people, because when you look at this, it looks like additional cost. Um, but if it's, but if it's really a decrease overall, it's probably good to note that somewhere.
And, and we'll show, we're going to go through the budget summary and I think it's actually called out there. So I, uh, but I will revise this and put it on because you're right. Um, thank you, Jim, I appreciate it. And we can do the same thing, we'll talk, when we get to the budget summary, we'll talk about student services as well. So, um, what Mandy's world is, and I, and, and Mandy is, just if you think about it, she started in a, um, remote environment in July and for her to dig in on a budget in October is stuff, but she, um, did a great job and we had lots of meetings about it. But there, the student service world is about specially designed instruction. That's in literacy, numeracy, executive functioning and social emotional behavior, that's their world. It really is about specially designed instruction. Their regulation is about making sure we provide fate, free and appropriate public education in the least restricted environment. Sometimes that's the vast majority of time, it's in districts, but sometimes it's out of district and teams make that decision. Uh, Mandy and the student services department oversees our five oh four services and making sure we're compliant. We do have, we have a transportation, transportation category here, we do related services, behavior, OTPT speech. Uh, Mandy oversees our nursing services, our ESOL and our homeless services, as well as our court-involved students. So all that is under the umbrella of student services. The categories of increase, um, just one thing, I just want to make sure that, um, we have reduced, the SAU office has less staff now than when I got here. We have a halftime support person for director of student services. We have less administrative support Maple Street School, we eliminated a position there. So in the past, we have eliminated support positions. Um, there's an increase of about twenty-two thousand dollars in general special ed contracted services. When we get to the budget summary and I'll show you some numbers, I just want to be clear, the speech was reclassed as well because our ability to, to hire speech. So it looks like it's an increase in student services, but that's because it came from staffing or personnel. Um, we have an increase in out-of-district tuition of a hundred and fourteen thousand. Again, Andrea, like you alluded to before, this is directed by an IUP or highly regulated. And then, um, transportation, remember we moved from, uh, we went to first student as a contracted as opposed to having our own transportation this year. So that's the switch there, so we have a reduction in our own transportation, but it moved to contracted. Everybody okay? And we can get you, I'll show you the total when we do the master, and if you want me to put it in here, I can do that. Um, business office. One of the things that, um, I think we pride ourselves on, or I'll pride, and I'd say, I think Michelle does and, and Lori and Karen and myself, is we really do try to personalize human resources. Um, for example, some staff, um, have want specific instructions for certain checks. Some might go in direct deposit, might, some might not go in direct deposit. And because, and we try to meet that need. We, um, we, we try to provide the services that staff need because the more we support the staff, right, the better they can do their jobs. Highly incredibly regulated. Um, the, um, really from the CBA to policy to incredible, what the, the workshops that Michelle and I had to attend on the Affordable Care Act years ago were incredible. And one thing that I noticed when I put this slide together is there's two huge things added to this side, like it was added to Bill and Amy and Chris and Rebecca and Matt and Mandy. But for this one, I just couldn't, I couldn't resist putting it in there. And, and that is the pandemic and also the building project. So the building project, the financial component of tracking and submitting bills and attending meetings, that was added on to a pretty, almost, I guess, filled to capacity business side. And in the same way with the pandemic, the grant management, the tracking, the ordering, the number of POs. So that's all in the financial personnel portion of the business office. Um, a lot of work on negotiation support out of this office, and there hasn't been any change. There is no staff coming forward. And one of the questions I get sometimes, you know, if I have any side conversation with a board member, right? I've talked about the five positions, building level special education, human resources, uh, uh, social services and curriculum instruction. And which one of those five positions, Steve, would you pick? And all depends on what's going on at the time. Um, but through the pandemic, uh, the HR obligations from forty, evaluating forty-one requests for ADA to the EFMLA regulations, the enhanced family medical leave act regulations, the FMLA regulations, the, the amount of work related to HR in that sect is extraordinary. And we're managing this and because of the budget is, we're not putting forward more human resource, but a director-level human resource position would fundamentally change Michelle's role and the next superintendent's role. Just a, just a thought. The other side of the facility, of the business office is the facility management. Um, we manage a hundred and fifty-eight thousand square feet of space, soon to be increased by eight thousand three hundred and fifty-six, and that is the amount of the Harold Martin School addition. Um, so managing that and from a facility standpoint is a director of facility. And it's Jay Burgess's quote, it turns a wrench. So our director of facilities is not an office position, projecting, guiding, negotiating, um, compliance. It is a turn the wrench position. Um, we also have a one point oh maintenance position. And we added this year, remember, we made a halftime, a full-time custodian position in anticipation of the additional eight thousand square feet at Harold Martin School and to ensure we had enough support for cleaning during the COVID pandemic. Uh, again, we use three hundred, uh, three-year average for projections and the PP is about a hundred K in there. That's our facility piece, everybody okay? Um, the superintendent. We hope that the superintendent provides educational leadership and vision. Um, the, this version of the superintendency is required to do lead curriculum assessment, instruction, human resources, student service, support student services, uh, facilities, negotiations and student management. Um, so that is, it's an all hands on deck. Um, specifically charged, uh, Dawn and I do policy development, all communication, support the professional development, tracking of staff, hiring, uh, and provide school board support, which means lots of minutes. I think, I don't know, thirty-five meetings in March, something like that? We've got a few. Um, included in the non-union portion of the budget is, is, uh, two percent of the non-union increase. Um, just to, if you're keeping score, um, last year there was zero, this year it was two percent. Um, the town did a two point five and a one point five, if you're curious, they, uh, they, town put in a one point five, according to Neil. Um, there is still maintain or reinstituted, um, the curriculum support, which is ten percent of administrative position. That's a half a day a week of Bill's job. And we're going to talk later about, um, curriculum management, curriculum training, teacher, uh, teacher leader positions. But that's the office of the superintendent. Everybody okay? Um, a little bit about the tax rate. Um, so the current evaluation based on this year's, uh, tax setting was seven hundred and eighty million dollars, seven hundred and eighty million. Um, one dollar in the tax rate is seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So if, just for your own, um, back of the envelope. And Jim and I talk about this, a hundred thousand dollars is thirteen cents. We both use that quite a lot when we're talking about budgets and things like that. Last year's tax rate. Last year's tax rate. Was twenty dollars and forty three cents. The year before was twenty dollars and forty cents. So there was a three cent increase in last year's tax. So as you start looking ahead. To start figuring out where we are, um, for this one, we're just talking about the expenses, but I wanted to give you just the fundamental tax rate stats. Everybody okay? So the summary, uh, this is the superintendent budget. This is stage three, teacher, building superintendent through stage four. The total is twenty million nine hundred and thirty six thousand dollars, two hundred and ninety two. It's a, uh, just under a million dollar increase. Um, four point seven percent. And I just uh wanted to unpack that increase just roughly. Um, just to see where you are, um, just to see how, where it came from. Two hundred and fifty two thousand of that increase was retirement, right? I spoke about that. Two hundred and eighty seven thousand is the, is the bond portion and a hundred K is PPE. So that's over six hundred. The third grade teacher is eighty nine thousand. The numeracy assistants forty three thousand. The two instructional assistants together is seventy four thousand. The out of district previously mentioned was one hundred and fourteen thousand. Overall transportation everywhere total is eighty six thousand. Those increases totaled to a million dollars. So besides those increases, we're down forty seven thousand dollars everywhere else in the budget. You with me? So I mean, I, I tried to get, look at that, I'm pointing to it and you guys can't see my hand. It's kind of funny. Um, I'm trying to, uh, I tried to get just comped where we are, the nine ninety eight to the one point, and so it's a little over. Over six hundred thousand is those first things and then it's enrollment, it's student driven and it's transportation. Um, and that's a four point seven percent increase. The, even though they didn't go in, I did reinstate the um assistant coaches. Um, I do believe as your superintendent. Um, and I, I spent some time this summer doing some, just doing some research. We talked about the importance of having a second adult for supervisory periods, but there's also. There are times nowadays, what's going on in coaching, what's going on, having a second adult. Traveling with teens, being in buses. Um, based on what's happened at other school districts, having a second adult for safety reasons, for relationship reasons with kids i- is probably smart now too, to be honest with you. So. Rein stated that the curriculum is back in. Um, because I, I just believe we got to continue on that component of the mag seven, but um. That's where we are. So we cut other places to put those back in. You with me? Um, so I'm sorry, this is a little long. I apologize if this is uh, too long. So next steps. Um. I know Donna's got some to do's. We want to get, my goal, Michelle's goal is always to provide the information you need. Um, we're going to present revisions and reductions. Uh, any questions you have will answer. And next meeting, we're going to talk about estimated revenue and proposed trusts and start looking at that component. Of it. December seventeen, we're going to put the tax rate all together for you, just what the tax rate would be. Uh, and we'll present a draft warrant if all goes well. Michelle is waiting for some language from DRA about some things, but we're going to try to put a warrant together for you in a couple of weeks. And then December twenty second or January seventh, hopefully Michelle and I, leadership team can support this board in developing their version of FY twenty two. I would, if it's okay, I'm happy to say, I would like to walk through the budget summary. Which really is the first part of the discussion. And show you what the resources are. In your folder and what would the community well have access to right after this meeting. So make sure that they see that. So if, is that okay?
Yeah, I think that's a good next step, Steve. Thank you.
Before you go, Steve, Steve, this is part, this is part of the change that we did from the finance committee, correct?
Correct. Well, the first one, the first one is, is historical. What we've done, but the second one is exactly, I'm going to show you exactly it's finance committee work. Is that okay?
Perfect. Yeah, I just want to make sure they understood.
Just because of time, we'd like to walk through the budget summary and then give all the rest just for back, for information so you can dig in on your own. Can you guys, uh, I know I'm going to make it bigger, so. Um, can you see that? Okay. Can you see yellow boxes?
Yep, I think I can see it. All right. I've seen a lot of nodding heads.
Great. So this is the budget summary and one of the changes, and Rob, I can't agree with you more. By reducing the number of years, it right, makes the, the spreadsheet a little bit more readable. So that is one of the changes of the finance committee right there. We reduced the years. So. Um, the category, the first category is instructional program, regular ed and special ed. So. In this four fifty, the big hit, the four fifty five is the increase in this area. The big components in here are the new staff I talked about. Out of district tuition I talked about and the transportation. So that makes up the big four fifty dollars, one hundred and seventy eight in special ed and two twenty three in regular, but those are the big hits in that category. Okay? This one is this, this twenty eight is an increase really in benefits for, this is our pupil support area. So why is that up? It's benefit increase and some changes in plan there. That's that piece. Here is the seventeen thousand under curriculum development. That's the curriculum back in. That we cut last year, that's the increase, that's putting it back in. It was thirty seven, we put it in, it's now fifty four. That's the curriculum stuff. Everybody okay? Um, this is the twenty seven thousand. This is what Michelle talked about for the technology. Down twenty seven is technology services, Jim. Um, that's what Michelle talked about. That's the twenty five thousand in Chromebooks. And some other cuts that we've made. And we also moved the nine thousand out for the phone system. Um. The two oh six, this is facilities. This is the additional custodian because remember budget to budget. Right? And we added that off budget this year. So budget to budget, it's there. Um, this is where the PPE is, the hundred thousand of PPE, and this is the benefit increases too. Um, the retirement and things like that. Does that help? Take a look at the sheet.
Steve, can you, I'm, I'm sorry, can you just um? The difference in the benefit, just to make sure I understand, you have a benefit increase, you know, three boxes up and then you have benefit increase here. Can you just explain the difference in the benefit increases?
Sure, different category of employee.
That's all, okay.
Yeah, so that, this is our counseling staff and plan changes and this is our facility staff and plan changes.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, sure. And then here's, this is where the bond is called out. Oh, I think I should have done that. I don't know if it, one was total. Yeah, I, I probably should have done that one, but this is the two eighty seven is the bond. It was my first attempt at yellow boxes on the call out. How do you, what, good, first time in twelve years, pretty good?
Uh, yeah, I think it's great. I mean, it's, it makes it so the. You know, all the numbers, the, the differences stand out so you can find them and understand them, which I, I appreciate. So thank you. Good job.
Uh, and we'll, and we'll unpack this more. So this will also go in and then um. Very much uh, among everything else, Michelle has worked incredibly hard on the. Package. So, and this is in the board packet. This will go to the community to, probably tomorrow. I was going to say tonight, but probably tomorrow. Um, so here's the spreadsheet that we just went through, just without the call outs. So you'll have two different copies of this. But here is. The programmatic. This is um, the programmatic budget. And so you can look by. Uh, area art at Harold Martin School, there's the total cost for art in Harold Martin School. Um, and we go through business, obviously business at Harold is not well funded, just so you know. Um, but we have all art, Harold, Martin, Maple, middle and total district. So this is your programmatic budget by, uh, in that view. And dig in on this. And is that okay if we dig in on this next time? Give you guys time to look at this? Um, and then here's, this is the by um, building. So this is the SAU budget and you can look by. Uh, all the psych services tutoring bilingual, this is where you cut it out by program. And we'll dig into that and then you go to. District, this is still district, then we go to Harold Martin. So Harold Martin in kindergarten. Is uh, the change is up four hundred and sixty seven dollars in kindergarten. Oh, down. I'm sorry. Thank you, Michelle. The parentheses, right there, down four hundred and sixty seven. Thank you. I'm sorry about that. Um, and then you have regular ed general. So this is the building level and so. I did district overview summary. You've got the program view and now you have building view. Does that help? And this is in the board folder. This will be on the website under the budget development and it'll be in support materials. Um, and give you time to take a look and, and see where we're at. And it is, how you group things are a little bit different, but each view will give you more information, but I hope this was what Rob and Norm envisioned for providing additional information this year in the budget process.
That, that's, um, thank you, Stephen. That's just, like, that's a lot of work um, to you and Michelle. So thank you. Um, and of course to, to Rob and Norm as well, but um, to produce these, I'm sure um, takes a lot of effort. So thank you so much. Um. I, I think it's a great way to, another good way to look at the budget numbers and I think should serve the community well.
That's a quick question.
Sure.
Steve, are we still providing the list before the superintendent cuts that will be on the website that we discussed?
Would I cut?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, so typically that comes at, I mean, and, and yes, absolutely. I, I can certainly, I have a list of all the reductions that I made. Um, so that typically appears at tier zero.
Okay.
I, I don't know if we're going to do the tiers or we're going to program it, but yes, if you would like a nice neat list of what the superintendent cut, I'm happy to provide that next week. Um, I, I typically do it the weekend. It doesn't matter to me. I, I could show it to you now. It's just not nice and neat. There's actually typos in it. Um, but I have a spreadsheet of what I cut from every building and department. I'm happy to make that available next week.
I, I would like to, any other board member objects, I would, I'd like to be able to see that from the beginning.
It was about two hundred and fifty thou-, it was, it's not just reductions, though, to be fully transparent. It's revisions. It's some moving it to CIP. Some moving it to tech, but it's a, it's, it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars came out of the operating budget. From my direction and it's up to the board whether we're going to fund things or not, but I, I was not comfortable with it in the uh, operating budget. But I will give you a list of my reductions. I probably should have done that this time, Norm. I apologize.
No, no, I, I know we talked about it in the finance media, like, you know, having it not part of the packet, but having it on the. On the website where people want to go look at, see what you reduced and all that, so they can see before and after.
Be pleased to present that to you next week. That, we've got some uh homeschool by grade next week. We're going to make sure we'll have each totals or change under departments like tech and I'll do that next week. Uh, what else can I do for you wonderful people next week?
You have sort of one sheet of paper as far as increases that shows. Two columns, one sort of, these are fixed cost increases like retirement, bond, we. Versus those things that you are adding programmatically that theoretically don't need to be added and I don't need to say that like they shouldn't be. I just mean, I want to see. So that when we're talking about the increase, people have in their mind. This category, our costs of doing business. That have just gone up. And, and to show that as clearly as we can.
Sure. Uh, and if it's all right with you, I'm going to add meeting a regulatory uh, special education duties as required.
Yeah.
So yes, I will have what we consider required by either statutory or some regulatory bottle. Uh, body and then what is necessary. Um, but um, it's still choice, uh, necessary by choice. Happy to do that.
And that's a, I mean, just doing the rough math here of what we looked at tonight, you got nine hundred and ninety eight thousand. Uh, retirement bond, the audit district and the transportation is seven hundred and thirty nine K.
Right.
Um, so it's, it's a, it's a very large number and the actual increase to things that we control is fairly small. Um, and, and that doesn't even take out the, let's be hopeful that we don't need a hundred thousand dollars in PPE for next year. So.
No, thank you. It's Seth and Rob. I, it, it was hard. I mean, I, I did not, look, I, I was here last year through the. Through the storm through August of a budget and coming forward with a million dollar increase wasn't, uh, we all hoped it wouldn't be that, but you just nailed it, Rob. It's, it's, I can't cut retirement.
Right. And so as we talk about the budget. It's important that we talk about it to me like that. That as Rob just said, it's eight hundred thousand dollars essentially. But I'm going to call them fixed costs, things we don't have discretion over and it's a very small amount. That we do. And so as we're debating these things, I think it's important we keep that in mind as we go through this discussion.
Yeah, uh, we'll bring a clear one pager on, on those. Happy to.
Thank you very much, Steve. Thanks for making those changes to uh. Show the programmatic side and. Lot went into.
I'd say it was a we and a mouse in my pocket, but it was Michelle Clark. She knows. I did not have a mouse in my pocket. Now, happy, happy to do it.
And then I felt like, if, to me, you know, with working with the finance community, this, this is very similar to a line by line, you know, it really shows clear. Where we were last year um, in the, in the reduction part and comparison and stuff. I've just, it's, it's really good to be able to go through that, Steve and Michelle. That's really great too. Thank you both for the great effort on that. I really enjoyed going through each one.
There's more information provided than um, in, in, in the, in the district. So that's our goal. That's what we want to do. We always want to give the information, believe it or not. We just want to manage it in. In a way that we can still have some of a life, that's all.
Steve, will we talk, uh, do, do we want to talk in finance about the. Early retirements and how that might impact the, the budget next year? In terms of uh, personnel costs?
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
That forward next week because that might change that number as well, if we can. Look that forward. Um, I also want to, and I know this is really tiny, but I, it's come up so many times in our discussions about sharing costs, uh. The idea of athletic fees and where they might be. Um, it's a tiny bit of the picture, but I think it's a bit of the picture that. Um, people feel is maybe due for another, another view.
Sometime, and I, Dan, I think, yeah, Dan's on the call. Sometimes he has a, a, a list of, of where the, the current state of the state, where schools are in the degree of, and maybe. We can get that information too, but we haven't looked at it. We have looked at it in the past. It's not the most recent. So, uh, and actually last year, I think, Rob, you and I talked about parking too. Remember doing a little.
Right.
Fee on parking. So we can talk about that, but we can talk about fees at finance. We'll talk about early retirement. Um, I think we need to talk about some revenue estimates too, right? Michelle, we'll talk about that. So I think we've got the agenda for next Wednesday pretty tight, but you and I, we can go over it Monday.
Okay.
And just. So I, the early retirement, at least the number that we can take this year is dependent on our fund balance. Is that correct? I mean, we have some budgeted obviously, but anything above what's budgeted would be, would be contingent on what we end up with on balance.
You got it.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and um. I mean, Michelle can look and see what's in our budget compared to the three that we have to. And if there's any extra, I, I, I don't know if there'd be any extra that's in the budget. Uh, because it's depend on, right, the, the um, more. The more experienced, the, the more, the older you are, the less of your return. I don't like to say, I want to be very careful about using those language. So, but yes. Um, I think Michelle usually budgets in early, on the early stage of retirement, middle of retirement and later of retirement, trying to spread it out. So, yeah.
So everybody's comfortable, um, you know, we have a lot of information um, to dig through for the next week and everybody seems comfortable with um. With what we're asking Steve and Michelle to bring back to us um, for next week's meeting in terms of deliverables. Is there anything else at this point? Um, that we want to talk about and we have, uh, Steve, I don't know if you want to go over the schedule again. Um, we sort of talked about it already, but.
I think we're okay. I just want to make sure everybody's got it in their calendars for the next few weeks.
Before we leave the budget, just, is there any other thoughts or questions from any board members? Um. I don't want to force anything, but if anybody has anything else to say, uh, now's the time, Norm.
Jim, when do we as a board discuss um? Other parts of this, of this um, budget process? And I think we talked about this before, you know. Long ago, like we talked about, like you guys bring in a number for the CIP, which has a value, you know, on the tax rate. Also, um, potentially talking about the repair maintenance, uh, repair maintenance or, and the technology. Uh, and then fifteen thousand, whatever we did for, when do we discuss that impact? In our decision process because that all ties, that tiles down to the tax rate. And that's next week. So all that will come, come together.
All the trusts. All the maintenance trust, the establishment of that, we'll take a look at the um, vehicle trust, special ed trusts, maintenance trust, technology trust. CIP, that's all next week, if that works.
Yeah, and the revenue as well. Yeah.
Perfect.
All next week.
Got it. Thank you, guys. I. Put it all wrapped around my head. Thank you, guys.
Yeah. All right, not seeing any other, other questions or thoughts. Um, Steve and Michelle, thank you again um, for putting all that together and bringing it here tonight. So we'll move on to um, the next agenda item, which is operating and learning in a global pandemic. Um, and I know uh, we wanted to start this conversation with um. a little bit of a review and an update on the, the decision-making matrix that, you know, we've been talking about since, since August, September. We put it together thinking about, you know, cases and how schools operate if we're in red, orange or green. And I know there's, in the last couple of days and weeks, because we've had to cancel school because of some positive cases. Or actually, I shouldn't even say that, because I think that's what we're going to talk about, that we've had some cases in schools. And so we've, I think Steve, in consultation with his leadership team and with nurses, I've made some decisions. And I think there's been a lot of questions about, you know, why decisions are, are being made and how. And so I think we wanted to revisit the matrix a bit. Because I think our world and, you know, world was complex before, in the last couple of weeks. But I think the world is becoming more complex with the number of cases that we're seeing in New Hampshire and our county and the ability of getting testing back in a timely fashion. So that's sort of the setup. And then, Steve, maybe I'll turn it over to you to sort of present and walk through some of the, you know, some of the challenges that I think you're facing as superintendent with your leadership team and on how to navigate some of these, some of the circumstances that are starting to present themselves.
Oh, thank you. And, and, and thank you to Amy, Nicole, Jean, Chris, Rebecca, Michelle, Amy, Bill, for trying. And in the community, I appreciate your understanding and the faculty's understanding as we operationalize and implement for the first time, the matrix in, certainly in a, in a red area. So, and it was a struggle in just to try to figure this out and to apply it and feedback, as everybody knows, I'm very open to feedback on things I missed or things I could have done better, or we could have done better. So we were faced with, in the first time being read, with the notion that, you know, we could cancel school for three days, five days, two weeks, you know, for a longer time. And the first piece, and I was really trying to, to get to Thursday to have this discussion before we had to operationalize it. Because one of the things that came early, now that the high school, for example, is, is lots, most kids are remote with about, you know, 20% in. What does closing of a school mean? And Mandy, through her work, is if we do have to close for a school extensive time, is providing services in school. So that's the first question that I had is what does closing of a school mean and for what reasons? And how do we manage that? Some districts have different levels where you're in like red for reasons and discussion that no one's in the building. And then you have a level below that is essential or targeted students are in the building. Then you have hybrid and then you have full. And in talking with the billing administration, that kind of discussion at least is something that I think we have to have as we start deciding about school. Is it safe to have 20% of the population in? Is it safe to have our, some of our special education students and faculty? I also, you know, and faculty and our administrators in the building as well. So that was, that was the early indication in trying to get to this meeting to have some thoughts about that. And then we were confronted on Monday with a person who had symptoms and had direct contact with someone who's positive. That wasn't in the matrix and it wasn't in DHHS. So we had to work through that. And for a lot of our time, we've had faculty eight days, seven days before a test came back. And so that's where we worked together on this notion of setting a standard. And I wrote about this in an email, a presumptive positive. Where if we felt more probable than not, right, the, the Tom Brady standard of more probable than not on, is with someone with multiple symptoms who had, we know, significant contact with someone who's positive, we were treating as a positive. And in all those cases on Monday came through as the right decision, because when they did get their test, they were confirmed positive. So we were, that intuition or that notion was confirmed. So what happened, so now we're dealing with a matrix, but half of our students were not impacted at all because they weren't in the school when the person, you know, was even close to being positive. So how do the matrix deal with a remote school? Like, if we have five students at the high school positive, but they have no connection to our school because they're remote, how does that impact the numbers? Do we close even though they weren't active in school? So that's another piece of the decision and discussion I've had with Amy, Chris and Bill about the, Amy, Rebecca, and, I mean, Amy Cook and Chris and Rebecca. So that's a piece. And then, so we, the, what we decided, and we is, and please know, all these decisions are made with nurses, with administrators. And I, if, I think if you gave them sodium pentathol and took me out of the room, they were, we're free to share their opinion. I don't think this was coerced by the superintendent. And we agreed on the first one, yet we're keeping, we're, we're going to close school on Maple and Harold on, Harold Martin School on Tuesday. And we're going to do that until we get a handle on it and see. And then we met on Tuesday and the contact tracing was tight. The buildings were ready. I checked in with Michelle. The cohort, original cohort was going to have another day out because of the, the way the cohorts rotate. And they were only going to be one day short of the matrix and we all felt that was safe to go. So I did not infiltrate, I mean, everybody knows, I didn't blindly follow the ma, the matrix. We interpreted it in, in a way that we want to make sure we could get days in, in a safe way. And we all uniformly believed we could save. And then what's often happened the third time, after I make an announcement, later on, we get another case and we have to change on the fly again. So these are the type of questions. All we, you know, we, I've got a lot of emails from staff, from the community about the decision made. It was thoughtful. It was deliberate. It was purposeful, but it was not completely inherent. It wasn't adherence to the matrix because we felt it was safe. And we erred on keeping kids in when it's safe. Because Frank, we don't know how long we're going to be in, you know, and because of all this, and we want to take advantage of every day we can in. So what does, so in summary, in a cohort model, what does active on, and I had this discussion with you in leadership and they were great. We tried to solve this together. Do we close school even though one group of schools weren't impacted at all by the positive case? We have five kids. Do we close school at the high school even though they have no impact on, on the 20, you know, 20% that are in? Do we close school there? And then we want to make sure, I've also heard from family, families and teachers about the consistency, about living in this day in, day out stuff. And that's not great for kids. It's right. It's not great for ed, for instructional programming. Matt, Amy and Bill are looking at distributing devices right now, just in case we have to flip. And so we can be more robust with more devices. So that's going to be happening in the next couple of days. We all desperately, Matt is a great poker player and he's very calm, but for the first time, I really want those devices, Steve. You know, we really did. They're not in yet. For Tammy, if you're going to ask, they're not in yet. You know, we were hoping they'd be in and that would allow us to be a little bit more nimble. So I think I'm rambling and I apologize, but it's, it's dealing with these type of things. What does closing of a school mean? What does the impact of positives have when those kids aren't directly in school? What is the impact of a positive on the opposite cohort if there's no relationship there? And is the board comfortable and is the community comfortable with a group of people, nurses, administrators, taking in everything? And, and Jim and I, I think we talked probably too much for you, but we talked pretty often through all this stuff. Is that process okay? Or is it just to close it for the next two weeks? And that's the stuff we're wrestling with.
So, I mean, I guess I'll, I'll just throw them, we start and throw my two cents in here. You know, I, I think the decision-making matrix, I think, is really helpful. Um, but I don't, I mean, I, I don't think it's black and white. It, I mean, it doesn't cover all the circumstances. And the one that stuck out to me was sort of this presumed positive. You know, the matrix says if we have positive cases, you know, we should act accordingly, but I, at least I didn't anticipate, I'll, I'll speak for myself, you know, when we were putting that together, that we would have such a lag between, you know, when someone may feel that they should get tested and when a test might come back. And so if, if we're in a five or six day waiting period, you know, we can assume they're positive. But it's hard to then follow the matrix like as a black and white document. So I, you know, I, I think it's a guide. I think it's a helpful guide. But it's, it's definitely not perfect. And so anyway, I, I say all that is sort of a setup to say like, I, I mean, I'm not in the schools every day. You know, Steve, his leadership team and, and the nurses and I, I think I feel comfortable if that team and the nurses are consensus of how to proceed using the matrix as a guide. I mean, I don't think that team is going to be doing anything that is going to be putting, you know, students in the schools at risk. So I, I have a high level of confidence that the decisions you're making are in the best interest of both the faculty and, and the students. And so I don't know quite if that gets to all the questions you asked, Steve, but in terms of like an operating guideline, that feels right. But at some point, I think we're going to be in a place where, because of the number of cases, it, we're going to be, I mean, we're always going to be weighing all this on a daily basis. And how do we make the decision that that sort of back and forth between in school, out of school is, is sort of too much for families and, and students because it does feel in some, but this last couple of days has felt very, you know, it's a lot of whiplashing and that doesn't feel like a stable learning environment for anybody. So I, I don't know how we get to, I, I think the decisions you guys have been making have been very good. I just don't know, like, when it becomes too much for both you and, and the students to be, to be in and out like this, because it doesn't feel very productive. And I was sort of rambling there. I apologize.
You, I have a question for you on the presumptive positive versus the confirmed positive and make sure I'm getting this clear. So if we had a confirmed positive and there were two and we're in red, we would be out for three days, correct?
That's what the matrix says. Correct.
So the presumptive positive is put in place because of the lag in testing.
But to be fully transparent, that next day, we did have the confirmed positive.
But I'm just saying that, that that's the idea behind the presumption. People feel bad. We're going to presume that it's a positive. And we're waiting for this test the next day it comes in.
Yep.
But if, if that is there as a hedge against that lag, then shouldn't a presumptive positive also say, in the best interest of everybody, we're going to clear the decks for three days to make sure. And now with, you know, it seems like the greater information we have is that symptoms are probably going to arise in five days. I guess I'm just trying to wrap my head around, I think the presumptive positive is a good cautionary step. And then I'm trying to wrap my head around a matrix that says three days and five days when we, and I get really nervous about saying we, when it seems like five days is, you know, you're, you're in the clear. If it's been five days since you've been in contact with that person, more likely than not, you're in the clear. Please, please don't kill me on public comment later. I'm trying to be good here. So, you know, I, I guess for me, and I appreciate what you're saying, Jim, in terms of it being a guide. But I think it gets really confusing for students, the community, faculty, if it's not a simple matrix where we connect the dots and say, this is our action. And I also wonder about, you know, you know, our, our liability as we begin to make more discretionary calls on those kinds of things.
And I think you described it really well. So when we found out, so the, the, the discussion at the elementary schools at the beginning was even, we, I was, first of all, we were surprised we got a test back so soon because we had, you know, heard like seven or five. My head was acting like we weren't going to have a positive. We weren't going to know yet. We're just going to react. So we looked and said, the contact tracing was there. The building was clean. It's going to be, this cohort is going to be two instead of three. Can we put the other cohort back in school? And there was, there was no contact with, with the infected person. We felt it was safe to have them back in school, but you're right. Tuesday afternoon, I could have said, because we, if I followed the metric, matrix strictly, we would have closed the school for three days. And the reason I didn't, because one didn't have any contact with them and the other one was going to be two. And I didn't know what was going to be gained by that third day. We had already understood the issue and we contact traced everybody. And we cleaned the building. What we were going to gain by that third day? And not everybody agrees with this, by the way. I mean, and some say, look, we need more time to see if more people are going to get it, even though we're, we, we, I mean, so I'm with you. And that's, and, and I, and if I missed it and I just should have done it, I'm absolutely there. And I, a lot of people offered that opinion to me over the last couple of days. But our model and was the matrix designed for a hybrid model with masks and six feet apart? Or was it all in? You know what I mean? Like, one of the districts using it was all in. They're using the same metric, metrics and they're all in and we're in half. Does that impact it? Or is it just its community spread, Steve? We just got to get everybody home and out until we settle this down because it's red. And, and I, if the board directs positive case where three, three positive cases in the schools is, but it has to be in the school or connected to the school. As opposed if it's a remote, if five remote kids are out, am I closing the school? And I'm not trying to be flippant at all, at all. And I'm with really good people about this.
So I'm not opposed to flexibility. So, but what is the, so what process? So when someone says, well, you didn't follow the matrix, and then you're going to say, the process I used with the matrix as a guide, but we veered from the matrix, this is the process we use. How would you answer that? What, what happened that led to the decision?
The, the, met with the team, the contract tracing was complete and the building was ready to be back because it was isolated into one spot. We couldn't, high-touch areas, we could clean the building. And we've had isolated, anybody who contact traced, they won't be in school. So I felt that the school population was going to be safe getting back in school because anybody who had connection with that positive case was home. Some of those kids had no connection at all because they weren't even in school. They were on the opposite hybrid, you know, the opposite cohort day. And I felt and we felt it was safe. But and, and, and please, and I completely, and I've talked to parents, I, I, this is about what I believe what was doing best. It wasn't about appeasing people or being afraid of people because I get hit on both sides anyway. It is, you know, it really, and but sitting with nurses and administrators, and we all came to the conclusion that Friday won't be any safer than Thursday. Because we contact traced all those kids and we cleaned the building. But I'm absolutely 100% fine with, and, and I think a lot of, a lot of staff would, would prefer that I was much more. And Rob, you've known me for a long time. You're not surprised about my interpretation of, of, of things like handbooks and things. So, I mean, it's, it's kind of in my soul is to always do what's best for kids, talking with great people, smart people and figure it out. But I, I'm absolutely fine taking guidance from the Hopkins School Board. That I promise you.
I think, I think part of the, the thing here is the communication piece. And I think that when, when we first discussed the matrix, my sense was that it is, it is a grid. And a grid to a decision with no discretion. And I think that, I don't know, perhaps that's what the community felt or that's what other folks felt. And then this was different. And I know that there are school districts that said, you know, it is a guide. So I think we just need to make a decision as to, is it a guide? And we're going to leave it to your discretion, discretion and to the nurses to make the, the best call, or is it going to be a hard and fast rule and communicate that clearly? And, and I think if we do that, then you know, maybe we'll, we'll at least be in front of it in terms of what people's understanding is. Might be more confusing if it's not a hard and fast grid, but.
I think you summarized what I, much more succinctly than I did my ramble for five minutes. That's exactly what I'm looking for. That's the tension or that's the dynamic. I think you summarized it extraordinarily well.
And is it fair to say, so in the beginning, I, I think in the summer, when it was a little COVID in our midst, I think we thought of this grid as a rigid thing, at least when we approved it, that's what I was thinking. Is what has happened there, it seems to me that there are complexities that have arisen in how it's managed that we really didn't think about. And is that fair to say? Is that what you've encountered as you tried to sort of implement the matrix?
Yes. Yep. The presumptive positive, the, how do you do it with, what is a, what does a positive mean of a student who is not even in the building? And how does a positive on one cohort impact the positive of the next cohort? Or do I not deal with that and just go?
Because of the middle high school right now, under the matrix, do we have enough students forgetting whether they're physically there or not, that they would trigger closing the school? Is that right?
Yes.
And that really would not be logical because they're not there.
That's, that, that's what I've been, that's what I would, yes, that was my thoughts in working with Amy, Chris and Rebecca. And I'm not saying I'm right, by the way.
And we certainly didn't think about that in August. I'm just thinking about, you know, like, what, what is this, you know? We adopted the matrix and now we're implementing the matrix and they're at different points in time.
Yes, but if we were just doing students, we would be closed. And, and with those 20% of the kids would not be in school. And but, but what does close mean? Because now we've also been instructed by the governor that we have to contemplate providing special education services. Providing special education services in person. And that's part of this complexity too. Or is the school operating because it's 20%? It's really closed. The high school is closed right now, except for targeted this, you know what I mean? And I, and I hope I'm not whining. I'm not trying to whine. I'm trying to just figure this out and I may have missed it in this week, to be honest with you. I may have been. Too, and, and. I, and I did get a lot of feedback about communication and I can do it better. And I thought, I think my second email and third email were better. Um, so I'm trying to do it, but some of this, and it's not an excuse, but it's utter exhaustion sometimes too.
No one's, no one, you didn't learn this going to college, you didn't learn this through experience. This is, this, this is, this is all new. I'm learning and, and I, and I really want to say you're doing the best you can for our, for our teachers, for our, you know, for our students. And, and I get it. Not, whatever decision you make is not going to be in the favor of one person and we all have to respect that. And, you know, I just don't want you to beat up yourself um, tonight.
Feedback is good. I, I, I do appreciate feedback.
You know, I, I, I will, you know, I, I will say that, um, you know, I, I struggle a little bit with. These, the students having one day in, one day out and how at a younger age them getting momentum. And be them scrambling to pick up their pack, get them being able to really set forth a schedule. It's, it's, it's hard, you know? There's maybe the group A will have one day, the group B will have none because we close. How do you balance the, the level of? I don't want to say fairness, but how do you balance that? Okay, you know what? Group A, you're home for the week, but group B, you get to go in and then it doesn't. You know, it's, it's hard and um, it's hard to get that rhythm going.
So what consultations or what feedback was there from the faculty? So I guess the one thing I worry about is. Sort of set an expectation for those adults who will be in the school. And we're not necessarily 100% adhering to that and to the extent. We made a representation, I'd be curious to know, was that where there was a significant amount of negative feedback?
It was um, that I didn't follow the matrix. And that I didn't communicate thoroughly about the reasons why or how I managed the matrix until night two.
Was that more from, was that as much from families or from faculty? I mean, I guess I'm.
Faculty.
Faculty, okay. So there, there has been some concern that we represented. There are a, a set of rules. For which the teachers now are being told, well, you're going to go to work, but we're not going to follow the rules as they were set out.
And you, yes, and, and I didn't do a good enough job in explaining the why I made the decision. Um, I think after I did, I explained the decision at level two or level three of this week. It, it, um, they understood, they didn't make it like it, but they understood that it wasn't arbitrary and capricious and I did consult with people and I, you know, we felt it was safe. But yes, so it was lack of communication and, and, and they, and everybody was extremely respectful, by the way, from the union leadership to, I mean, there was no. They did great and, and, and I, it was fine. And but then I also said that I wanted to work through with, with the board because if, if we're going to close for five days. If we have a positive tomorrow and we're going to close for five because it's, that's a community wide piece when. You know, on Monday, we're two days out, we can clean the building and two days out and that, and. So those are the type of things we've dealt with. We've used day, we, we brought in cleaners on weekends so we could open up Monday. Um, you know.
Andrew?
Yeah, I guess I, the thing that I'm really seeing with the matrix is it's, it's not allowing. As we have it, as it stands right now, is it just doesn't allow for us to be dynamic. It doesn't allow for us to say. We're going to close first grade, but kindergarten can still come in. Um, so I guess I, I envision it more as a guide. I think that you have actually done a, a great job of, of explaining what, you know, once you went into it. A little bit more of explaining to folks. Um, I'd also like to point out that currently, I mean, we have 12. Current cases in Hoppington. We had 12 current cases a month ago. The, the thing that's changed is the, the climate for the entire county or for the, and for the entire country. And so while the case numbers in Hoppington have gone up, it looks like 20 was our max and that was back in mid um, November. The Hoppington cases haven't actually shot up um. As much as, as, as we've seen kind of around the country. I, you know, we do still have an increase in daily new cases. So I, I can understand how that can be scary, but just to kind of give a little more perspective. Um, it's not like we now have 500 cases in Hoppington. Um, you know, I personally, I think I would be more comfortable with. Um, using it more as a guide. I don't think that this was designed for a school that's in hybrid. Um, I, and I don't think that having 20%, you know, of students in is necessarily. All in or you, you know, I just, um. I worry, I, I worry about closing for five days if we don't need to. You know, I, I understand that going back and forth is really tricky, um, but I also feel that some. Can be better than none. Um, you know, and I, I do think that. We might come to a point where we need to go out for a full five days, but I just. I think right now personally, I would be hard pressed to, to say that today is. Is necessarily the day. So I, I just wanted to voice my opinion that I, I was actually comfortable with your interpretation of the matrix.
Steve, can I, um, I know earlier on, so you know, early hunting September, so not that long ago, but it feels like a long time ago. You know, when we had a case, uh, DHHS came and, and helped you with the contact tracing and I know there was a lot of interaction with those tracers. And I know, you know, since the cases across the state have increased, you know, the. Just the number of, of contact tracing available through DHHS is, um, is either low or non-existent. So I guess. How comfortable, I guess, how, have you been doing the contact tracing, I assume yourselves and with the nurse stat, nursing staff? How has that gone? And I, and I guess to me, that's like. That's one of those things you have to weigh. If, if you're going to be closing the schools, it's really, the contact tracing is the important piece, like how? How many people have been interacting with, um, how has that gone? And, and just sort of. I don't even know how to ask the question. That was sort of a statement more than a question, but I guess how comfortable are you and the nurses, you know, doing that contact tracing and? Yourselves, so that I'm assuming that's kind of what you're doing at this point.
I'm incredibly impressed by the knowledge of the regulation of our nurses. Our immediate, you know, when they consult with, they, they really are, our, our three nurses have risen to this occasion. And, um, and they, I think they know, and I think if you ask them, if they said, Steve, we need to close, we're going to close. Um, you know, I, I don't, I don't have the knowledge or the experience to say no, and they, they've attended every workshop, they've talked to all the staff. They can figure out what it is and they do it very professionally and very knowledgeably. So I'm very. Um, very comfortable with Amy, Nicole, um, Jean and connection, the, the deep connection they have with the building administrators and the collaborative nature of it all. It is very collaborative. Um, I am extremely comfortable. Uh, I, Nicole is our point, Maple Street is our point person. So when I, I think I told you, when I have a state question or a guideline, I go sit six feet apart from Nicole with mask. And we talk through a, a, a lot of scenarios. Um, so now I am, and they're doing, I think they're doing an outstanding job. And I do think they would say to Steve, we can't open, and I think they'd expect me. And I would follow that. And I'm not trying to put on this. I mean, it's my decision. I'm not trying to throw, hey, it is my decision and, and, and if it, it was missed, it was me. It, it, it is, it is, if this was missed, it was on me. Um, they, they provided great consults and helped me make this decision.
I think you're muted, Norm.
Norman, if you wanted to say something, I think you're muted.
Oh, my headset's, my headset's died and now I'm.
So I guess the, you know, and Rob, you had sort of set it up the question well, and I think we've sort of gone around the horn a little bit, but you know, how comfortable? I mean, the question is, is this black or white or is this, um, you know, is this, is this guidance? To help Steve and his team make decisions? And so, you know, maybe just getting thoughts from the board on, on that question. Um, you know, how we want to operationalize on the matrix so that, you know, Steve, coming out of this meeting. You know, has, has, you know, marching orders isn't the right term, but you know, the, the view of the board of how. How to move forward and what's going to, like we all, I think we all know there's going to be um, more cases and, and. Is, is not going to slow down. And so I think giving Steve some guidance is how we want him to interpret this. It's going to help him out a lot.
Such an easy solution. That's why we're all just ready to jump right in here. I mean, I, I, I see it two ways. My, my first way, and you know, as Steve says, I knew, you know, I know him, well, he knows me and, and um. Hard and fast matrix would probably be the way to go, but uh, you know, there's been times certainly where you say, well, there are exceptions to rules. And you use the best people to make those decisions. And I think if we can do that in say, you know, clearly what that process is. Uh, I am a little concerned about the presumptive versus confirmed and waiting the three days to find out what the lag symptoms are going to be. Um, not just the tests. I mean, I think that's, that's the reason, right? We want to know what symptoms are going to show up and. So, so that's, that's difficult. I mean, and, and nobody wants to shut down. But as for the governor's order for 20% in, um. There's a lot of things the governor does that I don't understand. And you know, i- if it applies to what's in the best health interests of all, then it applies to the best health interests of all. And, and that's the way it should be. It, it shouldn't be, we're, we're concerned about that element.
And we came to the point where there, there's going to be a time where we, we're closed for everybody. And there's going to be a time where it's going to be okay to have some kids in and we just have to make sure we are deliberately addressing that in our thought process.
And, and I think that, you know, I guess my final point there was, you know, that step two, when cases are beyond a certain number. That, that's hard and fast. Then you use the matrix and say. We, we don't have the wherewithal, the knowledge, the contract case to, to make it all happen. But if we've got one case or two cases in different buildings that we can follow with the manpower we have, then take your flexibility. But if we go to that second stage, let's not roll the dice, um, do what you got to do. And, and whether that's three days or five days and that matrix needs to be adjusted. Whatever happens to be and, you know, 10 on the, on the far end as we saw that coming in. But I, I'd say on the lesser cases, flexibility, use your, your nursing staff to make those decisions. But at a certain caseload, it's a hard and fast rule, no discussion.
I think that makes sense. Yeah, I appreciate, and that's really where, where there, there is a time where we can't guarantee, you know, we can't not guarantee, but. And, you know, really believe that it's safe for kids because we just can't get it handled at all. I'm with you. No, I thought that was well done. Yeah.
I wonder if we can add some language to the, the decision-making matrix so that folks um, understand what the process is. When a case does come up, I think, you know, putting it right on the screen would be helpful. So when someone goes to check the matrix. They can see here are the steps that are being taken. Um, you know, I'm, I, again, I'm definitely a little more for flexibility. Because I, I agree, if you have three students who are already remote. And they are all tested positive, no, we should not be closing the school. I mean, I, I just think that we also have to, you know. Think through the, the whole process. Um, but I, I do think that adding specific language to the matrix. So that folks can see, you know, we've clean, fully cleaned the school, we have tested, um, we have done all contact tracing. You know, and are the teachers, or I'm sorry, are the nurses still doing? I know they were um, doing weekly check-ins with Dr. Chan. Is that still happening? So they're remaining really up on how this is changing week to week. So they, they really are the experts that we can.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, they were on, I think yesterday, I think there was a call yesterday, Nicole told me. She texts me during the meeting saying, this is a new change in guidelines. So, um, and they're, now I am incredibly appreciative. Um, to their professional expertise and, and thought process.
Steve, how is the weekly check-in with our students every day? Are they, have they been better? I remember, I haven't seen an email from Amy or Bill in a, in a while with people every day going into the schools. Has it been better? People checking in? Yeah, screening.
I don't, I don't know, to be honest, but I haven't, it hasn't come up in the conversations. Um, uh, much better. Am I, secret people tell me it's much better at HMS.
So it sounds like at least, um, Andrea and, and Rob, um, myself, you know, I think. Are comfortable with the flexibility, but I just want to make sure Norman and Seth, where you're at on, on sort of that question.
Just worried about how you communicate. Exeinty with the, with the teachers so that, because we are telling them to go to work. How do we communicate with them clearly about the reasoning for the decision as early as possible? And are you consulting with anyone on that side? As part of the decision-making process? Whether, and I don't know who exactly that would be, but.
Well, um, yes, I can communicate better. And I really do think the nurses are on that. I mean, I don't know what their size is, but the, the nurses care deeply of, of. And I mean, that was a discussion I had, you know, about the, the, the risk to faculty and, you know, kids and stuff. So. I think they are keeping that in their minds. And yes, Seth, I could, I, I could have and will try to communicate better about the why and the process of the decision. I, I don't think I met our standard on that Monday night or Tuesday night or whenever the night. One of the nights I thought I did okay. One of the nights I don't think I did well.
So just going back to what Rob said though earlier is, do we, do we have or do we want to? It feels kind of arbitrary, but figure out what the number would be, where we would want to go. Remote, I don't know if that's sort of getting ahead, but I know that, you know, we were just talking about that and I don't. I, I don't, I don't have an answer honestly for what the number is where we shut it all down. Um. But I just wanted to throw that out there because I know Rob brought it up as well and kind of the point at which you're dynamic and the point at which you, you aren't.
Wait, can we share, not, I mean, can we share the matrix real quick just to take a quick, get the three different stages and the numbers?
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Can, can you see that or no?
I can see the Brady Bunch.
I have it pulled up on my screen too, if you want it.
Um, if you have it right there, you can, I said, anybody can share. Sometimes this is funky.
You did it faster than me.
So that's it? You guys can see it now? You want to make it bigger? Three, five and until further notice in red. If we had five or more in one building or five or more across multiple buildings, it's closer further notice.
So theoretically this week, um, we had one at Harold Martin and one at Maple Street. So according to this, we would have closed for five. And you felt like with the contact tracing that that wasn't necessary, right?
So we had one, I, and I read this as one student at Harold, one student at Maple was one student or employee at multiple buildings. So I had it here with the three and the first cohort was going to be out too. The second cohort with no contact was out one. Um, but if you added in the secondary stuff, which we, and, and the secondary stuff, because they were not positive in our schools. If we added the secondary stuff, it would have been here, uh, with, would have been closed district and for, for the notice.
Do we have anybody who's working at both Harold Martin and Maple Street that's traveling between buildings right now?
Yes. I don't think in the same day. Uh, our, um, Kim Emerson is teaches in both, she's art.
And, and those are taken into consideration, I assume, when you do the contact tracing. Um, you know, if there's contact.
Yes, sir. And our numeracy specialist, Jess Pinkering teaches in both. I'm not so sure how much they cost during the day though, Rob. I don't know that.
Right. I'm just thinking about how the language is written here. Well, I guess. The question for me, Steve, is if you had two students or faculty members, um. Would you feel confident based on what you've experienced so far that you could do the contact tracing? Close the school for a day and, and perhaps be back?
And that's. And that's, and that's the language that I've used. Like, I like, I like closing right away and relaxing that day and giving time to do the contact tracing on the day closed. And then we meet during that day and said, are we ready for the next day or not? I know it's hard for people. I'm not saying that's a good way to live, but we've been pretty tight about closing right away for one day and, and taking our time breathing and making sure we're doing contact tracing to what we can. Um, because I mean, I think I wrote my email with just the presumptive positive, one of our schools, it wouldn't have closed, but we, it was the right thing to close, by the way, we've proven right. So, I mean, I hate to say, I mean, I think maybe two, I don't know. And, and some of this is, if we have a lot, some of this is staffing is going to dictate because if there's a teacher with or kids, you know, that like we had to close Harold for two weeks because of the member that, um, we couldn't staff them. And we're closed because we've got some quarantining because of travel, some quarantine because of context, some quarantining because of symptoms, not related to school. Those are all the quarantining right now. Because if we send someone home with, with a cold, you know, just the symptoms of a cold, they're quarantining until they get a test. Or they're not coming to school until they get a test. Sorry. So you guys just did a walk in my shoes the last half hour about how to do this.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with how he's proceeded with what you guys have said, so. I, I think that, you know, Andrea brought it up and, and we received some, some, um, emails from community members. I, I think that you know, moving forward, the bigger question is going to be like, when does it become too much? Um, and we need to other, other shut down for, you know, an extended period of time. We're sort of, um, well, probably for an extended period of time, what that means, I'm not sure. Um, and, you know, I don't, I, I think the matrix helps, but at some point I, I just think we're, we're going to get, we're just going to have enough cases in which that's going to drive, I think, a decision. And, um, and again, I, I, I'm comfortable. Um, I don't say leaving it up to you, Steve, and, and your nurses, but I, I think you're the right ones to make those calls. And even if it wasn't on the matrix, like if, if it just, if, you know, the number of contacts became so much that you felt it was better to close the school down for five, six, seven days. Um, just because there was a, a lot of contacts with one positive case that feels like that's a decision you should make and it wouldn't necessarily show up on the matrix.
We, we talked about that today, Jim, that if a principal nurse and a day custodian, we're all out, we, we'll be closing. Because we need to do high-touch cleaning throughout the day. If we can't replace it, we need to have a nurse to make decisions and we need to have a principal to guide. And I, I would say, Rob, it's possible two out of those three, if we can't, two out of those three may close us down. I'm not saying for five days, but they close us down until we can fill those positions and it's not on the matrix. I mean, you know, and if, if one of our nurses is sick and I can't get a sub in there, not related to COVID, I can't run a school. We talked about this at the very beginning. We can't run a school without nurses, principals and day custodians right now. Because we do have to, we clean high-touch all day long.
And I guess my, my final thoughts on this would be that you and the, and the nursing staff and the, and the principals get together and, I mean, a lot of these numbers are fairly arbitrary, you know, two to four students, five plus students, so on and so forth. But maybe rethink this and say, okay, this is our, this, this is our discretionary stage, level one. But level two and three is our non-discretionary stage. And based upon what we understand and can foresee, we're going to close for X amount of days. Um, and if it's beyond that, as Jim says, we're going to close for the foreseeable future until we know enough for, you know, 10 days. That would, that would be my, my sense. And I don't think that's something we can hammer out here tonight, but let you guys hammer that out and.
We'll bring it back next week.
Well, I mean, I mean, I, I, I think next week, whenever you're going to get it done, um, you should put it into action. God only should come back to the board and say, this is what I, you guys decide what, my opinion, you guys decide what it's going to be and put it out there, make the adjustments. Because, you know, if we wait till next week, God only knows, who, who knows what's going to happen the next seven days.
I, I think it's important that he brings it to the board. I mean, I think, I think we're okay with operating with trusting our superintendent, Rob. And I think that, you know, we, I think as a government body, we should have a, a chance to review it before he implements something. That would be my take as a board member.
In, in this situation, Norm, I'm going to just have to disagree with you.
Yeah, I, I think putting it into action or, or sooner than later would be my take as well.
And we'll have to come to grips with the, the community spread versus, right, what actually is impact in our school. Um, because for example, we've got five, you know, if five kids are remote, that they're in the community, but they're not in our school. So we'll kind of address that, but I will happily meet and, and, and take a look at version two, based on what we think we're comfortable having discretion over, what we think we're comfortable saying, look, everybody, if we get to this level, we're out. Happy to do that. That, that will help and that's progress. So thank you.
And the last thing I else, and this isn't a criticism at all, Steve, because I, I think you're handling the situation well with all the incoming, um, and inputs that you have. But I, I would just stress that, you know, when, when, whenever, when you, you and your team make a decision, um, and just, you know, just really think about that external communication, um, and then, you know, and just think about the questions someone might ask and just, you know, try to put that into that first wave of communication. Cause I do think you're right. I, I, I think your answer to some of the faculty questions were really good and, and I'm sure helped people understand why a decision was made. And so I think that goes a long way. And so my, you know, um, it's, it's not always easy, but I think the more, the more thorough the explanation of why, why the decision was made, I think will just help people feel better about the decision once it is made. Um, it won't answer everybody's questions, but, um, I think that's a piece of learning that, um, would be helpful. So and that's not criticism because I'm not, I, I, I think the circumstances are what they were, but I think that will help.
I think that's absolutely fair. A hundred percent agree. And, and no, I don't consider it's good feedback. I will certainly do my best to do that. I'm absolutely with you.
Um, so before we, before we leave this, let's make sure, uh, Steve, that you feel, I, I, I sense that you feel pretty comfortable with, with, and, um, and just wanted, any board member, um, have anything else they want to add at this point? All right. So we'll see, um, a, a new, uh, an edited matrix at our next meeting, but that's not, um, a requirement to not implement and use discretion as you sort of move along through the next week.
Thank you. I appreciate this conversation very much from all of you. Thank you.
Well, thanks for bringing it up and bringing it to our attention too. I think it's a, it's a dynamic model to be sure. Um, so next, uh, is it just an update on the secondary model and synchronous learning and, and what's been happening there?
Yeah, very quickly, um, I talked to Matt and Chris and Rebecca today. Um, the pilots are getting ready to go for the week. We're back. We, we're deploying equipment. People actually are trying out the equipment now, the cameras and the others, uh, and Matt's continually to meet, um, with the technology committee and they've already scheduling a debriefing time to, to what we can learn from that first week of trying it. So, uh, equipment is deployed and pilot set and scheduling pre and post evaluation periods are in action.
Can I, can I ask a question about synchronous? Um, I, because it came up earlier that there are certain uh, disciplines that it's more suited to and those that are less suited to. If we do move to a synchronous model, is, is that part of the consideration that this might really work well here and we'll do it? And it may not work very well here and we're not even, you know?
Absolutely. And we're, we're limited by staff as well. And if you remember that, um, some of our remote learning specialists will serve as instructional assistants during the synchronous when we go to that model too. So we're going to go to the fullest extent we can where it's most effective and also within our confines of staff.
Thanks.
All right. Any other thoughts on the synchronous learning for now? All right. So we'll move on. Um, and is Dan going to join us for this portion, Steve? Um, we're talking about, oh, good. Um, on, on athletics and, and we last week, I keep wanting to say two weeks ago, but it wasn't two weeks ago. It's last week, we, we, we touched on and had a conversation, um, about athletics, you know, really specifically basketball, I think is where we focused our, our time and attention, um, and, uh, allowed for the continuation of, um, of open gyms, six foot separation, um, and, uh, masks, knowing that that was a temporary that we were going to have to come back today and sort of dive a little bit more deeply in and give Dan and team a bit more guidance on how we saw things progressing between now and January. And so, um, I think I'm going, am I going to hand it over to Dan? Just sort of walk us through where we are. Um, perfect.
Okay, Kimberly, hearing okay?
You sound great.
Great. Thank you. My computer died today, so I'm, uh, scrambling and luckily my wonderful wife brought me down hers. So I'm, I'm using her computer tonight, but kind of screwed me up, I gotta say. Um, so it was actually two weeks ago that the change was made to, to do the open gyms with a six-foot separation. What you have today, and I guess what I'm here to talk to tonight about is hopefully in the board packet, you've all seen and received the proposal that I created in support of winter athletics. Um, the proposal, just kind of go through it a little bit and tell people who may not have seen it yet. It, it's got a couple of different parts to it. First of all, there's an overview of sports in general and, and our protocols or safety protocols across all sports. And then it separates down into the different sports and, and each sport is different and there are different safety protocols in, in place. So what I did is I, I did look at some other school districts to see what they had done, in particular, school districts that had had volleyball this fall and had done indoor sports. Uh, I've talked to all of my varsity coaches and I had them vet this and look it over and make comments. And I wanted to make sure that first of all, they were comfortable that they could oversee these protocols. But second of all, that they felt safe, because I think important with whatever we do is that not only are the kids safe, but the coaches are safe as well. And then finally I reflected on, on fall sports, um, you know, what worked well for us and what were things that, that we needed to improve on. Uh, also obviously the climate and, and knowing what it's like having basketball games in this gym. Tonight, I'm going to talk mostly about basketball and hockey, uh, unless I'm really reading the board incorrectly. I think that's where most of the concern is. Uh, I'm happy to talk about Alpine and Nordic if you would like, but I kind of gear it towards the other two. I, I guess the first thing I talked to is, is the rationale for why we need to do sports or why I feel we need to do sports. And to start with that, I'd like to look back at the fall and the success of the fall. And I'm not talking wins and losses, championships. That's just icing on the cake. The success this fall was what it meant for our kids. And the number of kids I told you a few weeks ago, who have come to me and, and parents who have said, what a difference this made for their children. Um, it, it was unbelievable. Sports really fill a void for these kids. And I would argue that actually given the model that we're in right now, where our kids are even more remote, they need that connect. That they need that, that sense of belonging and that, that activity that only comes with being part of a sports team. They really need it. Uh, it gets dark earlier now. You know, it, it's just, there are so many different things that are there that these kids really need from sports. Uh, it would be interesting to me. I think if you did a survey of the kids and the parents involved in fall sports and asked them, my guess is you would find nobody who regretted doing fall sports. Um, in fact, I think you'd find the exact opposite. I think you would find, if you have not already, the number of people who say, yeah, it really made a difference for my kids. Um, a couple of weeks ago, actually, sorry, sorry, earlier this week, we started open gyms. I'm actually here at school right now. One just ended up. But on Monday and Tuesday, we opened up with, with basketball, open gyms and, uh, you know, they were six feet apart, they were wearing masks, uh, and after the practice, I had the coaches, one of them texted me and one of them called me and said, you would not believe the enthusiasm of these kids. They were just thrilled to be there. Uh, one of the coaches called them giddy. That's, that's how he described his, his team. I've had parents in the last couple of days have reached out and said, just in one open gym, how much happier their kid has seemed at home because of this open gym. It really makes a difference. One of the things we do very well as a school, I think, is we do what's best for kids. That's really kind of one of the overarching goals that I think Steve has instilled in all of us. And a lot of times when I do this, I try to look at those kids and, and put myself in their shoes and say, what would they want? And, and also what would their parents want? And, you know, I go a little bit further. I, I, you know, walk and talk sports with my wife Danielle and, and we were talking the other day and, and we said, you know, if we were a parent right now and that Hopkins Middle High School is going to offer sports and our son or daughter wanted to ski or play basketball or play hockey, what would we do? And we talked about it and we talked about the pros and cons, and we both came to the same agreement that we would choose to allow our kid to do that. We think the benefits of sports outweigh the risks. As I thought about that more and more, I think the key word there is choose. It is a choice. And I think every family is going to have to make a choice, assuming we go forward with sports and it's a tough choice and I can understand that. I, I know you guys are pulled on both ways. I know you've got some parents who are out there saying, hey, we should be allowing sports, no masks, fans in the bleachers, let's just do it. And then you've got others who are saying, you were even crazy to even think about doing sports in a pandemic. Where are you going with this? I, I, I get it. I think this proposal that we have is kind of a centrist proposal. I really do. We have rules in place to do our best to keep sports safe. We are talking about things like limited fans in the gym. We're talking about masks on our kids. We're talking about disinfecting and disinfecting and disinfecting. Um, no locker rooms. We, we have all these protocols in place to try to present sports fairly. Again, there are some who are going to say that we shouldn't do that, that this isn't safe. And I will argue, and I do argue that if we don't offer sports, these kids will go somewhere else. They will play AU basketball. They will play the hockey programs. And as a result, these kids will be all over the place and we won't know who they are playing or where they are playing or when they are playing. If we run sports, we own it. We tell them what the rules of participation are. We tell them what our expectations are and they're going to have to abide by them or they can choose not to play. It is their choice. We also get the, get the decision to choose where, who, when they play. And I think that's a big piece of that. A couple of other points I would like to make, and I don't know if you call them points or bullets or whatever. I cannot stress enough how much easier and safer it would be to start sports and put on the brakes than it would be to say, let's stop for now and let's, let's try to start later. Um, I, I think, you know, I could expand on that if you want, but, but the biggest reason for that really has to do with basketball. And I think one of the best parts of our proposal with basketball is that we're looking at playing one other school a week when we get to that point. And so we are looking at one other school interacting with one other school, middle school, high school, varsity JV for a whole week at a time. We have a tentative schedule set up right now with other schools, just in case this goes through. And right now we have that in place. If, if we say no to sports at this point, then I have to tell those other schools, look, you've got to go elsewhere. They will find other games. And then if we decide later on to say, you know what, we do want to do it after all, we're going to be scrambling and I can't guarantee that we can play one school a week across the board. And I really think that is a safety piece we have to have. The second point, this isn't just us. Um, we have a cooperative hockey program with John Stark. Uh, one of the things about a cooperative hockey program is neither school has enough students to field their own hockey team. So we do it together. I talked to the AD at John Stark yesterday and I said, you know, I don't know which way the board's going to go with hockey. And, and he said, we might have a problem. He is expecting around 14 players from John Stark to play hockey. Without Hopkins and kids, you know, as a former hockey dad, well, once you're a hockey dad, you're always a hockey dad. As a hockey dad, um, it is really difficult to play hockey with 14 kids. And that's not even including they're wearing masks while they're playing and, you know, as a pandemic and, and all those other things. The third point, I would like to point out two local school districts, Conval and Kearsarge. Both of those school districts decided not to do fall sports. They didn't feel safe doing fall sports. Kearsarge, uh, pursued an intramural program and they played intramurals and then at the postseason, they decided they were going to play in the tournament. Conval just said from day one, we're not doing sports. Both those school districts really saw what a detrimental impact that had on their kids. Both of those school districts are now playing winter sports. The last piece I want to make, it is December 3rd. It's December 3rd. Uh, our plan for sports is this coming Monday, December 7th, Pearl Harbor Day. Uh, we would be looking at having middle school basketball tryouts start. And the reason why it really has to be at that point, and we can't keep pushing things back is once we start high school sports and, um, our, our plan and what the NHI has proposed is that the following Monday, December 14th, we would start middle school Nordic, we would start the other high school programs. We really need to pick middle school teams. Um, one of the safety parts that we talked about is trying to keep small groups in the gym, groups of 11 with a coach. And that is our plan. The longer we draw out the open gyms, it is great for the kids to get in there, but we really need to start containing them and having these smaller groups. And that means picking these teams. We really need to start middle school sports on Monday, if we're going to do this. And then the following Monday, we would start the high school. Throughout all of this, the first time we would be playing any interscholastic games of any kind or meets, if you're talking skiing, would be January 11th. Roughly six weeks away before we do any of that. Um, we know how much things can change in six weeks both ways. And what I want to remind you is that when you guys vote on sports tonight, if you vote if you vote yes on sports, we are not voting to have Conant High School come to this gym tomorrow night and have this place packed with the crazies. That's not what this is all about. It's about moving forward and allowing Steve and Chris and me to make a decision on a weekly, daily, even hourly basis, where are we? Where are we as a community? Where are we as a school? Is it safe? And if it's safe, we proceed. And if it's not safe, we put the brakes on. A yes vote does that. A no vote really means that for the next three months, these kids aren't gonna have the opportunity to play all or some interscholastics sports. I'd hate to see that door shut and I hope you give the kids the opportunity. That's my speech.
Thanks, Dan. I don't know, Chris, do you want to add anything?
I would just add that, one, I want to, I want to thank Dan for the work and research that he's done to move forward these plans that he has shared with you and with Steve and myself. I've read them through a couple of times. I think they are well-written. I'm not sure that I can find anything that I would have asked Dan to add to or take away. I do think just being involved with USA softball and USA basketball outside of school, I think they're comprehensive. I know our students want to play. I do think that we have a very responsible group of students who will abide by whatever sport they're participating in, that they will follow those guidelines. And, you know, if I think about where I would back that up, I guess I would just back up with our everyday operations, you know. We have not had an issue with wearing masks in the day, for instance. I mean, that was a major change for our students and for our staff, but they're doing it. That's a small piece, yes, but I do believe our athletes understand the opportunity that, yes, this is a privilege for them. It's not a right. And I say that wholeheartedly because they also know how quickly it can be taken away from them, not because of a decision that's made by Dan, myself, or the superintendent of the school board, but simply because of where COVID may go. I don't, you know, we don't know. But I would, I would support the winner sports program moving forward.
Thanks. So I guess I'll open up to the board. If there's questions, I agree, Chris, I think with, and Dan, I should have started, I think the documents that you put together were very good and thorough. So thank you for doing that. I should have started with that. Thoughts on the board, questions?
Hey, I just wanted to echo both of the presentations that we were sent from you, you both, or from you, Dan, rather, as well as, we had a couple of community members write in with very detailed experiences, which I really appreciated because I am not a hockey parent and so I don't necessarily know all the ins and outs. So I thought these were really helpful. I really appreciate the fact that locker rooms are gonna be out of commission. And I guess this is more kind of for the board when I'm thinking about sports at this point. And I'm looking at small teams and we're looking at the guidelines that are in place. The other thing that I've been thinking about a lot is actually what we talked about at the last meeting that had nothing to do with sports. It was the WRBS. And in that document, it talked about, excuse me, so it talked about suicidality among our students. And last year, I believe we had, I wrote down the numbers, 18% of our high school students thought about suicide, 11% had a plan, and 4% made an attempt. I also think about the things that can increase suicidality, like isolation, a trauma, like a global pandemic, and a lack of access to services, like when you're in remote learning. And, and it's not, you know, I don't so much think about like, well, maybe they'll go out elsewhere because maybe they will, even if we do have sports. For me, however, the thing that pushes me forward in wanting to support winter sports with these very specific, strong regulations is the fact that especially our high school students really are just not being able to connect with their peers. And I worry, you know, as someone who specialized in crisis intervention and suicide prevention for years and years, the impact that this has, and I do see sports, even though for some, it, people might totally disagree with me and say that it's a risk not worth taking. I feel actually that this is a risk that I would be comfortable putting forward with these regulations and allowing parents to make that decision for their kids. I've thought a lot about it over the past week, among other things. So that's, that's just my two cents. It's kind of a different perspective from what you guys presented, but one that I think for me is compelling.
I'll jump in, Jim. So I think at the last board meeting, I was pretty clear that this was a real struggle for me. And it began around the consistency issue and it's still, for me, is around consistency. You know, we ask kids when they're, when we are in school to be six feet apart and wear masks. And my understanding is that is pretty strictly held to. But now after school, we're gonna say to a subset of kids, those rules don't apply. You'll still be wearing a mask, but you can more, you know, you're going to break that six-feet plank. And that's really hard for me because I think we've also told the community that part of the reason that we are not 100% in is because of that six-foot plank. So that's a logjam in my head, that cognitive dissonance that I just couldn't figure out. And I gotta tell you, Andrew, you know, I think we've all thought a lot about this and I've lost a lot of sleep because, you know, sports are important to me. I think, and I've seen throughout my career how important sports are for kids. So I'm trying to find a way to get there and it's been a struggle. Some of, you know, and I agree with you again that it is voluntary, but I also think about the voluntary piece. It's a choice that puts yourself at risk, but in this pandemic, when we make that choice, we put other people at risk. And as a board member, I have to think about that. It's not just the safety of the kids. It's if somebody were to become infected, do they infect their family? Do they infect their neighbors? It's not just voluntary for me. So that's a piece. I emailed Dr. Chan a couple of mornings ago and he responded to me, which I was pretty impressed by. And I'm just gonna read the latter part of what he said. So he just cites that, you know, gave me the guidance and the link, which we've all read many, many times. And the closing two sentences says, "It's pretty vague," and he's referring to the guidance. "It is pretty vague and flexible in certain areas, so schools and districts are faced with these tough decisions about how to safely conduct sports. To be clear, any indoor sports where close contact occurs is going to be higher risk. The goal is to find ways to minimize those risks, but the risk won't be zero." Now, I think the protocols are there and I think that, you know, those all make sense to me. But I'm still to the consistency piece and I'm still stuck with the risk level. So one of the conversations I had this week was about what if kids who were playing sports were choosing to not only play sports, but choosing to take their education remotely? And that essentially would create an athletic bubble, so to speak. And in the short term, from now through Martin Luther King, I mean, we're, we're remote for four of those weeks and we're really in for one week. So we'd be talking about giving up two days of in-school education to move forward. That brings me to a far more consistent message between what we're doing in school and what we're saying. Okay, there's a greater risk with doing this. We get that. And this is what's gonna be required to make that happen. Now, when we get to playing games, then the risk is going to increase because now we're outside of our community and, yeah, you know, our coaches and Dan oversees protocols that are in place. And we can assume that other schools are, but we don't know how well they're doing that. So the risks are gonna increase again. So if, when we get to the game schedule, when I think the risks really rise, if those students were in a remote environment for the four weeks of their season, and I believe the seasons are shortened, Dan, I don't know, you can tell me. Then that makes a lot of sense to me in terms of the safety factors all the way around. So that's, that's where I'm at right now and I'd be curious to know people's thoughts.
Okay, I'm not quite sure where to start there, Rob. That was a whole lot there.
Oh, yeah, I've been thinking a lot, Dan.
I see that. I guess what I'm gonna start with was the, you talked about, you didn't say hypocrisy, I'm sorry, I forget what your word was, where the kids are in school, six feet apart. And then after school, we're talking about them being close to each other. You know, sports are different and I know you don't like that answer. We did it in the fall. We did it with soccer. We did it with cross-country. We did it with field hockey. We did it with football. I mean, it was those sports, they were within six feet. This is a choice. Going to school is not a choice. The kids have to be there. You have the choice to play sports or not. We are putting these rules in place and saying, "We're gonna do everything else. You're gonna be wearing a mask. You're gonna sanitize. We're doing small groups." The last thing about that, and maybe to rectify this, you know, a couple of weeks ago, I listened into the meeting and there was a question, somebody asked, "Why we don't go full in?" And I believe the answer was because there was an MOA with the teachers and that they couldn't have kids be closer than that because it was an issue with the teachers. Coaches aren't under that same contract. They're not in the MOA. So, you know, this is after school. This is a decision. It's just like a decision that, you know, I make. Do I go to a restaurant or not? I can choose one thing. Somebody else chooses something else. Do you choose to play sports or do you not? In terms of, of the safety of everybody involved, you know, again, I hark back to that if we run this, we run this. These kids will play sports otherwise. And if we're not doing it and overseeing it, we don't know what the oversight is gonna be. We don't know if they're gonna be asking kids to wear masks, if they're gonna be disinfecting, if they'll even be quarantined in certain cases. So I guess those would be my answers. I'm sorry if I missed one of the parts.
Well, I guess I'd be curious to know what your thoughts are. I know that Bedford, that's, that was one of the conditions for running their football program, was that those students took their education remotely during the season because of the increased risk. And, you know, there's, there's trade-offs to everything in what we've been trying to do. And I'm, I am desperately trying to get to yes. I really, really am trying to get there. But I, I'm thinking, you know, we're, we're in the red storm of the pandemic right now. We do need to think not only about these kids who want to play sports, but we have to think about the kids who come to school every day. We have to think about the teachers who come to school every day. And, you know, you do need to go to school, but we also have a system where people can choose not to go to school and take their, their entire year hybrid. So there is a choice. So I guess, you know, how would you feel about, and Chris, I'd be curious to know you as well. How would you feel about that condition being placed on the winter sports that? And I'm not saying we need to make it now, but, you know, come Martin Luther King Day and when we have a real sense as to how it's going and whether or not there's a progression in cases, that we decide, or comes back to the board and decide that, "Yeah, so, you know, if we're gonna go into game season, then that's the condition." Or, you know, what we've learned in the last six weeks.
Steve, could you give us, could you, Steve, either?
Yep.
I think what we had to talk about this, you had said, as of right now, this was just for Hopkinton right now, just to kind of play against each other, kind of, and then we'll reevaluate winter sports when it gets closer to actually playing other schools, correct?
Right. I mean, that's, we don't, Dan, when do we begin this? The schedule is at the 11th or the 18th?
January 11th.
So, so between now and January 11th, it's just, it's just hot.
So as superintendent of schools, you're recommending moving forward with the plan of the kids would be scrimmaging just against Hopkinton and we still have time as a board to say, "You know what? Come January, it's not safe because we're gonna be mixing school communities. You know, fans are gonna be coming and all that stuff. We have time where we could say, 'You know what? This is ludicrous. This is crazy. You know, this wouldn't make sense.' We have that window.
Yeah, I think Dan was clear. If we approve it now, we are still in it. And there's a chance to, you said, put the brakes on, or there is that chance. But it means it's not a six-foot practice anymore.
Correct. Yeah, I understand that. I understand that.
One thing that I've talked about and we've proven is that, no, schools will not, if we have a case within our basketball program, we're not playing basketball against any school. We have a case in any of our programs, or if any school has a case connected to any of their programs, they're not gonna play it. That, I mean, that's been proven, that's been shown. And that, I'm, I'm very confident in that kind of, I think Dan said, hourly. If we get a call at 3 o'clock, we're not going.
I think the other thing to consider is the fact that we have had students playing basketball and hockey for months now. I mean, they have been, there have been kids playing AAU and there have been kids playing hockey. It's not like they're not currently playing and then are all of a sudden, if we say yes, are gonna be playing. So I just think that there's, I think that's, it's an interesting, we're fooling ourselves, I think, to think that it's not currently happening. And I understand that right now, we're talking about our school district, but that, that risk is, our kids are already experiencing it.
But I would just say to use that logic, you know, I mean, kids are doing, our community members are doing all sorts of things, not, not wearing masks when they go to the supermarket, but yet we make them wear masks in school. You know, there could be some extracurricular drama happening in other places where they go that we're not allowing that in our school. So I think that's true. And that could be said of any sort of segment of our population on any activity, so.
I love a both and. True.
I think, Rob, you know, I certainly appreciate everyone's point of view. This is not an easy discussion. It's something I've been involved with since March at the sports level. I, I, I think if, if, if the, if the board would be willing to support allowing us to move forward with the guidelines that, you know, Dan has put together. And if we need to come back in the first week of January to see where we're at in regards to whether or not we're gonna move forward to, you know, with the games, I think that at least meets the immediate need for us to get the programs going and off the ground. I think by the first week of January, we're gonna have a much better idea of where we're, you know, where we are as a county and as a, as a community, on whether or not, in the surrounding communities, on whether or not moving forward with games is something the board that can then support. So, you know, may, maybe, I guess what I'd like to propose is like just a two-step implementation of this. The first step is getting approval to move forward with just our players because that's what it's gonna be for the next several weeks. And, and let's see how the health of the county and the health of the community progresses and then make a final decision to move into games. And maybe that will give Rob more time to, to, to find the path that he would want to get to, yes. And I appreciate that he continues to look for, how does he continue to support athletes? Because I could only imagine, as a former coach, to, to, to say no to an athlete is not an easy thing to do, especially when we've been coaching or playing ourselves for many years. So I guess that's a proposal that I would make and I don't know if Dan would agree with that or not. It's not something, you know, Dan and I haven't sat down and, you know, had a discussion on how do we, you know, have this discussion tonight outside of, you know, just both being on board of supporting our athletes. But I guess I would just throw that, that as a proposal out there for consideration.
No, I'm sorry. Boo's gonna speak. Dan?
I was just gonna say, you know, Chris asked how I felt about that and, and I think that is fair. It gives us a clear directive to move forward. At least gives me the opportunity to tell other schools, "We are at least leaning forward to playing." And come the beginning of January, you know, who knows where we'll be? I agree entirely with Chris and that's true about everybody. I mean, everybody could be in the same boat beginning of January. This could be a no-brainer either way.
Could either of you, I, I appreciate that, Chris and Dan, but I really would like some commentary or in Steve about this idea of, you know, creating a selective bubble through choosing to be remote during the game season and for those two days when we're back in. Because I do think that essentially you've got 34 kids who have an increased possibility of, you know.
I, and I talked to Nicole and Amy about it. I had a personal, you know, this was talked about in the community that I live and I asked my daughter, who's a pretty passionate basketball player, would she choose remote to be able to play? And it was a very quick yes. And I think I get that. A couple of things, there are some kids that are getting services. Athletes are getting services in school and necessary in school, so we've got to figure that out, that piece. Now, as you know, Rob, nothing's ever as cut and dry. I think it's worth pursuing and talking about, especially depending on, like Chris just alluded to, the levels that we're at. depending on like Chris just alluded to the levels that we're at and how much risk we are. It does, you know, Dan put together a proposal that mitigate risk. That next level is to bubble them a little bit and keep them in remote. That mitigates it more. It'd be interesting to see what the, what the families thought about that. And I want to make sure we have an enriched educational program for all our kids and where we are with synchronous and where we are with the quality of program. I think it's, you know, I, from my perspective, if that was the deal with kids, it'd be interesting to see Dan talk with the kids. They would, they would, you know, that'd be a willing choice. As long as we can offer quality program and in a Chris looks at me and says, Steve, yep, we're, this is where we're at and it's a quality program. I think the opportunity cost for that decision is mitigated as well.
Do we have any other, and this may, this is for maybe a Chris and Steve question, but do we have any other extracurricular activities? That, you know, traditionally occur indoor that those students would also, I mean, I, I understand we're talking about sports, but we also have other things that students do that we're currently not, we're currently either changing or not allowing them to do because of the masks and six foot separation. I'm just curious if this opens up anything to other sort of loosening of our, our guidelines for sort of indoor activities that I, I'm just trying to think through like how it affects other, other aspects of the student life that may not be athletic, but us, us, us changing our standards may affect, you know, other, other aspects of, of the school life.
Well, I don't think there's any risk to having a school dance after school and violating the six day, six feet separation. No, I'm just kidding. I leave that to Chris.
School dance ever.
So, I mean, Chris, you can speak. I mean, he started the discussions about, we talked about drama when we nominated the schedule B and drama and how they're managing under the, the, the new guidelines and how they're doing drama and theater. I mean, that's really our after school program.
Right. So, you know, like student council, they're meeting on Wednesday afternoons. It's their virtual. When, 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 when NHS is newly selected, you know, those will be virtual. I've been talking to Matt Kromman, even our, our our induction night that will be, you know, virtual. So I, I don't, I don't foresee anything immediately on the radar. You know, in school, I think, I think the, if we think about any point during our schedule where the, a spread of a virus could certainly happen. It's like during band, right? I mean, we have kids that are blowing into instruments and, you know, Bridget worked hard to make sure that the students were spread out further than six feet, you know, but we wouldn't go into band or I wouldn't, you know, I would, I, I could, I mean, I haven't talked to Bridget about this, but I doubt, I a hundred percent doubt that she would come to me and say, well, if we're going to allow sports or basketball, you know, I can put all the entire band kids together. Yeah. I just don't think she would come and, and do that. I think we would still work to do everything we can to keep our students safe, maintain the six feet during the normal school day and, and, and move forward and and, you know, and, you know, I, I want to support this. I'd be hypocritical if I didn't as an AAU coach. I would. You know, I, I mean, and we've worked hard in, in the AAU and USA softball to mitigate as much as we can. And make sure that our players are wearing masks the entire time, whether it's during a basketball game or basketball practice or softball practice. And in my experience with all of these athletes that I've had a chance to work with outside of school, they haven't questioned a coach on why you asking us to do this. We haven't asked them, you know, put their mask back on. It, I, I do believe athletes understand that their ability to play a sport is really a, a privilege that they have, you know, not everybody has that privilege and it can easily be taken away. And I, and I think they have a tremendous respect for Mr. Reserve and what he has done for them over the years. And are certainly willing to follow those guidelines. And certainly I would support that as well. But I don't see any, anybody coming forward and saying, well, if we allow basketball, can we lighten up somewhere else? And I, I, I just can't foresee that right now.
Dan, do we have current for soccer, right? We were outside, obviously. Did we have athletes play Hopkin and they were playing elsewhere at the same time?
Sorry, my new computer trying to get the mute button. Yeah, I'm fairly certain we had some kids who played in other programs.
So my question is, is that, you know, it kind of debunks a little bit of the argument saying, you know, if we don't prove it, they're going to go elsewhere. And if they're playing both, it kind of draws a little of a concern, you know, I guess, you know, to the district as they are playing elsewhere. You know, I, I, I respect the privacy of, of a student, you know, whatever they do in their own time is, is, is their own thing. But I'm just, I'm just going to throw this out there not to have the whole public go after me. But is it possible to say, you know what? Code of conduct, you know, since Hopkin is controlling the environment and these are rules that we would ask you to stay. Stay here, you know, so, you know, we're not having this possibility of tracing in multiple locations. It's just a, just something that popped in my head. Is that possible?
I, I think we could certainly ask and we can encourage. We certainly can't mandate. I, I would actually say a bigger violator than anything else is probably indoor soccer. A lot of times it's not our basketball players or, you know, winter athletes. We just have kids all across the place playing indoor soccer and we don't know for that sport. So, you know, you're going to get some of the athletes to play another sport. I don't think you're going to get a lot.
We understand my mindset. I'm just trying to.
I understand. And, you know, I get it. I, I, when I played basketball in high school, if we were caught skiing, we were kicked off the team. It's one of the reasons I can't ski. You know, you couldn't do it.
Thank you.
So I guess the, the question for us now, which I think was nicely put by somebody, I'll give Dan and Chris credit for nicely is just, do we want to, does the board want to get permission for, you know, for winter sports to proceed under the schedule and guidelines that Dan has put forward? That doesn't mean we're agreeing to games, but we're agreeing to the schedule that Dan has put forward for, you know, doing the, the tryouts, picking the team and allowing our teams to, to begin practicing. And then, you know, coming back sometime in January before season starts to sort of reassess. And I'm thinking, you know, again, I think Dan read the room right at the, at the beginning. I think this is really about hockey and basketball and not so much about our Nordic season. And so this is really just, do, do we feel comfortable with that as sort of a next step? So that, you know, so that Dan and Chris have clarity on sort of how they, how they should and need to proceed.
And if, if they would, if you'd like, I mean, this morning I had another regional principals meeting. There's a listserv for that group, you know, if we did talk sports, winter sports, but we just talked about the number of schools that have approved it and and really outside of us, because we don't have wrestling, wrestling is the, the other large conversation that's happening. I, I'd be happy to send out an email and ask, you know, how many people are considering a, a bubble, if you will, Rob, if that helps. I don't mind doing that at all. So I'd be happy to do that and try and get that information by next Thursday.
That'd be great, Chris.
So this isn't really a vote. This is more of a a straw vote. Maybe we'll call it a straw vote. And I'll ask it maybe in the negative because that's an easier way. Does anybody opposed to moving forward sort of as, as they outlined it just a few minutes ago? And I think in Chris doing a little bit more research, but, but then then coming back in early January to sort of reassess where we're at. Is anybody opposed to doing that?
And does that give you what you need? If we do that?
It does. It would, it would allow me to schedule with other teams and say, at least in good faith, we are moving forward and we, at least the door is open to play sports. And if we pull the plug a week before, you know what? We tried it and, and this was in place. It also allows us to select teams and get into the smaller groups, which is what we need. So yes, it does give me what I need.
Is any objection to giving Dan what he needs? All right. So I think, I think we have a plan. So I think, Dan, you have to go ahead to proceed. And, you know, we'll, we'll come back and I, I don't know our schedule off the top of our head, but I, I want to say January 7th, we, we probably have a meeting. Steve's giving me the thumbs up. So maybe we'll just schedule January 7th as sort of a next check in. I, I, actually I say that, but I should ask you, because I don't know all the season dates. I think they're like on the 11th. Is that too close to that, to your opening season date to sort of meet? I don't want to pull the rug out from under anybody that close to a season starting. So.
I, I think that gives me enough. I mean, I, if I'm reading this right and, and I, it sounds like, you know, you guys are moving forward. We're all obviously cautious here. You, you know, a lot of latitude to Steve and Chris and myself to see where we are. And as I said earlier, this might be a no brainer. This might be a, hey, you know, we're not, we're not doing this. Or it might be, wow, the vaccine is coming out and, you know, things have leveled off and we could do this. So yes, I am fine with that.
Can I ask one?
Could I just suggest that, you know, maybe if, if Chris and Dan can get some feedback from athletes and their families in terms of their willingness to, you know, if, if it meant taking education remote, would they be willing to do that? And if we could have that in two weeks and then I think Dan probably sooner than better would be a, I, I mean, I'd rather make a decision in two weeks. So kids know there's going to be a game season and make a decision January 7th. I'm sure other schools would like that as well.
You know, and and I, and I think one thing, Dan, that's probably going to be a little hard, hard to say is I'm, I'm, I'm leaning towards no visitors. Like no fans at all from opposing schools potentially. I mean, I know in your proposal, from what I read, you know, one per parent. You know, I, I wanted to negotiate that with you. So I didn't, I wanted to kind of have that potentially, you know, up for us to discuss at some point. You know, I, I did have some reach out to me who volunteered their services, who's a professional play by play announcer that would gladly do it for you, free of charge. And we all know him from Hopkin and I think that, you know, there's, there's avenues of getting this delivered to the community if we decide to forward it so they can hear play by play, but I'm concerned about fans. I'm going to be really honest and open with you about that. You did a great job for soccer. But this is indoors and I get a little, little concerned with fans and from other school districts coming. I know for a fact that other schools are saying no fans at all, no visitors. So I want to have that for discussion in the future on this board, if that's okay with you.
I understand completely. I'm fine with that. I will tell you, Kier Sargent Hillsborough have both said no fans. My proposal was, you know, I would love to go two fans per player. I, I realize we talked about this a few weeks ago. And that might be a little optimistic, you know, a fallback might be one fan per player and two fans per senior. A fallback from that is let's let the seniors have two parents and a fallback from there. I got to thank Steve. He has helped put, we actually just signed the contract the other day. We're going to put a camera in the gym and we'll be able to live stream basketball games. So people will have a chance to see Hawk basketball. Hockey will be the same thing. There's a camera in the rink there. So people can see it. And if fans aren't allowed, you know, I, I would love to see at least some get there, but the most important thing, as we've talked about from the beginning, is these kids playing.
Thank you, Dan.
And I'm fine. Rob, just to your suggestion, I, I, I think if, if Dan has information from parents or what they thought about, you know, remote learning, I think that's good information, although just in my mind, that, that, that doesn't make a no go, no go, no go decision. Because, because the other part of it is just what, what does, what does our reality look like come January 7th? And whether or not everybody wants to be in a bubble may not be enough to say that we should carry forward with the season because of, you know, if we have, we have heightened risk and we're closing schools. It may be that we don't want to have a season, even if everybody agrees to remote. And so anyway, so I think it's interesting information to have. And I, I still think we want to, you know, look to see where we are in early January, just to, as Dan said, is this a no brainer that we don't, we don't want to proceed just because of other circumstances, other than people choosing to go full remote. So, so anyway, I say that we, I think we can do both, but I'm not sure that's the only factor in saying we should have a season or not. So I don't know if that helps. All right. Um, is there any, anybody else have anything else they want to say before, before we close on in this one? I think we've at least reached a point where we can move forward. So that's, that's a positive. All right. Well, Chris, thank you for joining. Appreciate. And Dan, thank you very much as well for all the work that you've been putting into this and continue to put into it. I, I know the kids will benefit greatly. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
I'm demoting them. I always like.
All right. So moving from athletics to bad weather. Steve, bad weather and snow days is on your agenda.
We spent some time as a leadership team talking about the approach, you know, because we have some remote capabilities and some pieces, but at the moment, until we get the devices, until we get everything out, a, a snow, a, a snow day would still be at the beginning of the year, a snow day, which we would make up in the spring. When we, if we think we have too many of those, or we think we can pivot to a high quality because of our devices and because of our program, then we can look at an inclement weather day being a remote day. But at the moment, like the first snow day, unless at this point, it would be, if we can't get half those kids in, and if we can't get the kids in because of the buses can't roll, that would be a makeup worthy day in the spring called a snow day. That's the current thinking. And I'll keep you posted on it where we are. But if we do, as I said, if we get the devices in and we think we can do a blizzard, you know, it would be the equivalent of a blizzard bag day. Then we may be able to switch, but I think Jim, you and I talked about this. I think maybe a, a, a snow day, when a beautiful snow getting kids out and doing something different might be not the worst thing we do for our school community. Is that let them have a traditional snow day at the beginning of this journey. So just updating the board, if there's any, if that offends anybody's sensibilities, just to let me know.
It's 2020. It's not going to snow. Anybody have any thoughts on, on the snow day? All right. So we'll move on to the building committee update. Norm?
Thanks, Jim. We had a quick 20 minute meeting the other day. Everything's going well. Over at Harold Martin, as you know, we're still constructing the structure over there that Steve put up a great photo of to start the meeting. Things are going well over there. We recently installed in the kindergarten room, new COVID air movements in the area that has gone live. And everyone over there is very pleased with that. Over at Maple Street, things are going well over there. We have one little issue that the team is looking at next week. That's a small leak over at the gym part in the corner over there. They said there's a little bit of leakage that has developed. We don't know what's caused it and I should have more information in the next week or so from BPS and what it will take to fix that particular leak. Some good news actually for Amy during the Christmas break, she'll finally have some carpets in eight classrooms. So she'll have some work finally going on at her, at her location, along with the roof being complete, you know, around December 30th. And of course we'll have some information regarding that leakage shortly. The, probably the only other thing that's a little concerning that I think that I just want to bring to the board's attention is due to COVID, we're having a little bit of a longer lead time on the pipe, piping for the fire suppression. So we're, Gordon's working well with BPS to gather all that information and really focus on getting all our information in with the state, because we get a certain percentage of fire suppression that needs to be completed, you know, by the end of December. So we're hoping, you know, the state would be like, you know what? Hey, it's 2020. We're still going to give you this percentage. We're doing everything we can to make sure that we can fulfill getting that grant from the state. So everything's going well. The, probably the next important thing for this committee in the next meeting will be adults. So I believe January 15th, we'll have a good number, good discussion. Steve's meeting with his leadership team to kind of get a, a feel for what they want, you know, they, they, they have a better idea of what's going on in their, in their building. And they'll bring it to the building committee meeting. We'll discuss it. We'll look at what we have left for, for flow in the, in the budget and bring it to here to talk to you guys about. Steve, Rob, did I miss anything?
Did you mention the meeting was 20 minutes long?
Yeah, it was 20 minutes long. Yeah. So it was a, it was a good meeting and we're getting through it. So very happy with the project.
That's good, Norm. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I thought we were going to break that 20 minute record tonight, but I guess, I guess, I guess we weren't able to.
Almost just there.
All right. Thanks, Norm.
Thank you.
So next up is personnel items. And so Steve, we have a number of them and I would just, just ask you to, to go right through. And if there's any questions along the way, people can jump in.
Sure. So we're pleased to bring the request forward of Matt Christie requesting paternity leave. He's our engineering with technology teacher. That'll be start date and duration determined by the super. He's our engineering with technology teacher. That'll be start date and duration determined by the superintendent. I always love that because whenever I put the start date, it wasn't ever accurate. So, so that's an action item tonight. We're bringing forward our two curriculum positions, teacher leader positions. We have a curriculum design specialist position. This is a teacher working with teachers about developing and enduring understandings, essential questions, assessments and things like that. And our curriculum management specialist, this is to do Rubicon, to make, to manage and work with our new staff about understanding Rubicon and our management tool. This year, because we really don't know, everybody's got a lot going on. So we're, we're going to put a cap on the amount and then pay per hourly in the work. It just seems like, it just makes everything easier because we just don't know how many hours. Like we'll put workshops out, but if, if we're, if teachers don't avail themselves of it, it's just because there's a lot going on. So. But we do want to provide the opportunity for our staff to do, to continue our work in our curriculum areas. The other piece is, we had, everybody okay with that? That's a nomination tonight. And then we did have a, a, during the year, which is rare for us, a during the year resignation of a special education teacher. This is a new hire, a summer hire. Christine Wooton, and I think I put Kristen on the action item, Jim. So if you're reading it, it's supposed to be Christine. So if you can fix that, the, just decided to really wanted to work in home district and there was an opening in the home district and felt that that for, for was best for her and her family. We are very pleased to bring forward the same night because it's usually difficult to fill these. But we have a little bit of kismet in that a relative of one of our teachers, Mr. Anasim, Kim Emerson's brother, Peter Anasim comes forward, he's got a special education experience. And is, and is coming in. He will have to quarantine because he's coming out of New England, but he'll work remotely. And I think, Rob, if you saw the board notes, I put the step in track, I, just for that information. And I'll continue to update that. And Jim, I, I, I don't know which gender you're looking at. There was one, there's also, I, I did put on one of the versions of a superintendent search update. I don't know if you have that. And the one, I'm sorry, the one I have didn't have that. But if you want to just add that and provide that for Seth, and then that's it for personnel?
Perfect. And I did have that on mine, so that's good.
I apologize.
No, no worries. So any questions for Steve? All right, so superintendent search update, Mr. Refrain.
So the window for application closed November 30th. We received, I want to say 24 applicants. The search firm does the initial, they screening interviews, initial reference checks, initial background sort of searches, and they narrow it down to a group of 10. The 10 will be considered by the special cert, the search committee or the screening committee on Tuesday, December 8. So, and that's, that'll be a long meeting, but that should be completed in one night. And so from that, we will get feedback from that committee. And at that point, it'll be our turn to figure out, based on that feedback, the numbers of we want to interview and how we want to structure those interviews and really moving towards the final process or the beginning of the final process to make the selections. And so I can't tell you anything about the candidates at this point. It's, we're not, we're not quite at that stage yet, but it's coming soon. We're getting there.
So Seth, do you feel like, just sticking to that schedule, if you guys get all your work done on Tuesday, on Thursday, the 10th, when we meet again, would that be a time to sort of bring that, I, I guess, bring all that together for the board to figure it out?
It's at least a time that we, we will be able, Rob and I will be able to give you a report. I think of what the screening committee had said. I don't want to, want to talk to Monica Brown exactly about how we best want to present that to the board and if, and if she envisioned the more formal presentation than Rob and I presenting it. So I will let you know if that's when we want to move to the next step, but it won't be long for sure either. It'll be sometime in December, I'm sure.
And we probably should talk to her as well about, I mean, some folks have, their districts don't know. How we, how we choose to.
Right.
That.
Yeah, and I think we can do that work in non-public, because those, there would be reputational issues associated with, with hiring. And so I think, however we do, I, I think, you know, we got to keep the, the names of those who applied to be confidential. So I, I think that, that's a non-public conversation.
So after the screening committee, I think after that is done, Rob and I will get back with Monica and talk about, so how do we move from that to the board and we'll let you know, because she has had good advice at every step of the way. So.
Perfect. That's great. Any questions for, for Seth? Great. Thank you, Seth. That's good. That's a good report.
Just, I wanted to say, thanks for all the guys are doing on that. I know it's a lot of work and I just want to let you both know that I, I appreciate. And, and good luck next week with the, with the community and thank you for their volunteer and doing it too.
Yep, that'll be interesting.
All right, so if there's nothing else, we can move on to the second public comments period for the meeting. And so I just ask again, if, if you wish to provide public comment, just go down towards the bottom of your screen, click the raise your hand button. And then magic happens and, and you're able to provide comment to us. So the first hand that's up is Dennis Mollner.
Hi, guys. I, I decided to sign in on my computer. It's Dennis Mollner from 55 Briar Hill Road. I just, a question as a point of reference and then a couple of quick comments. Again, this is about winter sports. Did any student in Hopkinton contract COVID or suspectedly contract COVID during fall sports? And similarly, are we aware of any student that contracted COVID in New Hampshire during fall sports in the fall?
For school sanctioned.
Through a school sanctioned scholastic event.
I'm not. I mean, I can understand. I, I don't know of any, both locally or statewide.
So Steve was talking. Steve, do you want to, do you want to?
I'm not aware of, of a case locally in Hock or statewide. I know, yeah, I'm not aware. I mean, I can, I can certainly ask Jeff, you know, at the state, but no, I'm not aware, Dennis.
Okay. And, and I just think that's relevant, because again, we worked really hard to make it a safe environment in our, in our school district. And I realize that things are different in the winter. Norm made a good point that it's some of our sports are indoors. And in the fall, they were all outdoors. But even in the outdoor scenario, we, we allowed for football where, where extended periods of time were spent literally holding opponents face-to-face on a line of scrimmage for an hour and a half. And, you know, we, the, those, of, of course, our kids wore masks. I don't know if everyone behaved on the other schools and wore masks, but we ended up getting through the, the season without anybody can, that I'm aware of contracting COVID during a football game. And I think that raises a very good point. And that point is that there's a difference between persistent exposure and intermittent exposure. When we sit down in a classroom, we're sitting down for 50 minutes or 40 minutes or an hour and a 20 minutes. And we're within, or we're a little bit more than six feet and we're wearing a mask, but we're sitting there breathing for an extended period of time next to someone who has it. It's a little bit different. There's examples of intermittent exposure that all of us are exposed to. We go to a checkout line in the supermarket, we're closer than six feet. We might both be wearing masks with us and the checkout person, but we're there for a minute, a few minutes within six feet of somebody. So if we're going to ask student athletes who might have intermittent exposure to be full remote because of the risks of contracting it, then are we also going to ask staff and teachers? And people who go out to dinner, go out to a store, who get within six feet, even when both parties are wearing a mask for any amount of time? I think that's a little ridiculous. I really do. And I'd also like to decouple the discussion about hockey and basketball. We decoupled the discussion about Nordic and Alpine. And I think there are some significant differences there as well. Again, basketball's a, a sport where you spend most of the time covering somebody. Hockey and soccer, for example, are sports where we spend most of the time going to open spaces and, and using the whole field. And I think that in addition to that, I don't, I don't know that Dan has spoken to Mark Searls at, at John Stark. But John Stark does not have 14 players. John Stark has seven or eight. If we decide to go forward with the season and we change our minds in January, we are, we are denying the student athletes at John Stark the opportunity as well. And I, and I, you know, and by the same question, are they going to be able to do a full remote while they're participating in sports? And so I think that should be considered. And I, I really can't believe we're having a discussion about trying to deny student athletes. We're trying to separate the, the student part from the athlete part. I really, I really think that's taking this discussion in the wrong direction. And if you're, if you're going to change your mind in a few weeks after some practices and decide not to do it, you know, tell the kids that now. I can tell you every single one of the hockey players will play club hockey. I can tell you that most of them will play just high school because you can't do both schedules in a condensed high school schedule. So we can either control it, we can send them out to the community and get it. And if you've been to Bow Field House or the Concord Sports Center, you get to choose either having people wearing masks by your rules or people doing whatever they want by someone else's rules. You're not doing the staff, the community or the, the, the athletes any favors. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Next hand up is Nicole Masters.
Nicole is our nurse at Maple Street School.
Hi, this is Nicole. Just to answer Mr. Moller's question about students that, if we have had any positive students playing sports, we've actually had two that have been playing hockey. So I just thought I'd let you know that.
Thank you, Nicole.
And I just think the question was fall sports.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, sorry. Sorry.
No, it's, it's fun. Thank you.
Nice to see, nice to hear you.
So Dennis's hand has gone back up, but I just wanted to see if anybody else wishes to provide public comment, they should raise their hand. And so we have Jen. And Jen, just if you could just state your full name and your address, that'd be great.
Hi, this is Jen Blackriff, 716 Hopkinton Road. I just wanted to provide a comment slash question that it's with the numbers going up and everything going on. It really seems like the possibility of us closing for greater than two days in a row. It seems like that would be very, very possible. And I would really like the administration and the board to develop some type of policy regarding live instruction. I really strongly feel that after two days, that there should be a minimum of daily live instruction for every grade. I understand it may differ, differ from grade, but I know I provided public comment at another point about this. But the two weeks that Harold Martin went full remote, in my opinion, that was completely inappropriate amount of live instruction. I know the teachers have a ton of work to do, so I would be okay with less handouts, less online stuff, you know, to limit their workload. I feel that that live general ed, and I'm talking general education, not special education. I feel that live general education instruction is really important for, I see it being more important for the social emotional health. It's also important, obviously, for, you know, academics. But I think it is very, very important for the kids, for the social emotional aspect of things. So. And my other thing is this kind of going back and forth, I'm actually okay with that. I'm, you know, I, I'd rather have my kids in than switch to remote. My kids are upset when they're home for, you know, a day or two, and they're completely excited when they get to go back. So I think we all just need to be safe, obviously, but I just wanted to give you guys the perspective that the back and forth, I'm also, I'm okay with. So, do you guys have any questions?
Oh, thank you for your comment. Appreciate it.
Okay. Do you guys think that would be possible to come up with some type of minimum per grade of live instruction? Develop that before it actually, you know, we actually get to that point of two weeks?
So we are talking about distributing devices currently in, in preparation, as many as, more like, not like the every person model, but the spring model where those who needed it. And once we have devices out there, which means we're going to sacrifice a little bit of in-school device work because we can't, we're bringing back and forth. But we think, Jen, that will increase our live instruction.
Okay, so those two, so, but could there be a minimum set per grade? I guess is my question at the, you know, at the Harold Martin level and the Maple Street level.
Yeah, happy to bring that to the leadership team and, and talk about that. But we're going to try to get closer to a school day reality when we have the devices.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next hand was George McGrath.
Hey, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
We sure can.
Okay, thanks. I haven't used the webinar version of Zoom too much. Yep, George McGrath, 31 Willoughby Road, Hopkinton, class of 1980 graduate. I appreciate everything everybody's saying on this call, trying to keep our kids and our athletes safe. The school board would have gotten a mini presentation I put together that kind of highlighted a lot of the points that I think Dan already made. A shout out to Dan, that was just an amazing job. Earlier in this call, we gave Steve Chamberlain discretion to follow a matrix. We trusted him. We trusted his decision-making. And I guess what I would ask is, let's extend that same capability, that same trust for Dan and the other administrators, faculty, staff, coaches, anyone that's involved. I would just say, let's trust them just as much as we trust Superintendent Chamberlain. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Appreciate your comment. Amanda Gilman.
Hello, everyone. Amanda Gilman, 168 West Ridge Circle. Thank you all for your tireless efforts. I'd like to echo, I think Jennifer Blackriff, her sentiments that, yes, the on-again, off-again thing has been difficult, but it, it doesn't compare to the difficulties of full remote. And so I am 100% okay with the flexibility that Mr. Chamberlain has exhibited. And I appreciate the common sense that he and his nursing staff and administrators have utilized in interpreting what was meant to be a rigid, I think, algorithm at a time of many unknowns. And using common sense and implementing it now, I, I applaud them and I thank them for their efforts. And I would also like to echo Jennifer's sentiments that there is no substitute for in-person instruction. So as soon as we, because we are going remote, so as soon as we can develop some sort of plan to have a live instruction, because I definitely see a difference when you are remote, to have live instruction for your children versus computer programming and Google Docs, they just don't compare. So I just continue on the path forward. I think you all are doing a wonderful job and, and I appreciate your efforts. Thanks.
Thank you, Amanda. So I'm just looking at the hands. I don't have any, I don't have any new hands for people who haven't spoken come up. And so, so just ask if there's anybody else who has a comment to raise their hand. There we go. Beth Mayland. Oh, Beth or Dennis, whichever one wants to speak. I'm not sure who, who it is, but, oh, there we go.
Sorry, it was me. I muted. I'm going to go back to where I started again. I'm Beth Mayland, 55 Briar Hill. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify a little bit about kind of what, you know, the expectations were in club hockey for some teams versus what the expectations would be for high school hockey. And yeah, absolutely. And fall hockey, we've seen some cases. Our son has been one of them. And I will say, in that situation, his team was using locker rooms and were not wearing masks on the ice. So whereas our daughter who plays club hockey, they have had no cases. They have not used locker rooms and they've worn, worn masks universally. So I think it's hard to kind of throw all of hockey under the bus when we've seen the way that some teams have followed precautions and others haven't. And I think particularly in that age group of the U18 boys, nobody wants to be the kid that goes out on a mask if it's not universally required. Nobody wants to be the kid that says, I'm not going to go in and hear what my coach has to say before a game because, you know, I'll be the guy that's not in the locker room. So I think to do it safely, you should, you know, universal, no, no use of locker rooms and universal masking. And I think the we'll find that the few cases that we did see in the fall were related a lot to to behavior. Locker rooms for hockey, even before COVID, are notoriously poorly ventilated, ventilated breeding grounds. So I just, I just wanted to put that out there. I think what we saw in fall was that when we do have a controlled situation where there are restrictions there to keep the kids safe, it can work very well. I want to sort of just play off what Dennis had said, which was, you know, I do have a lot of trouble as a parent putting my kid in a situation where he would have to decide between his sport or in-person academics. And if it came to that, quite honestly, he may choose to do club hockey because academics are a real focus for him as well. And in-person academics is very important for him. So it it it's going to put the kids in tough decisions where they have to choose between academics and and sports. So that's if if we put them in a quote bubble.
Thank you. Thank you for the comments. Appreciate it. So I don't believe I don't believe I have any other hands up for public comment. And so I'm going to close public comment for this evening. I want to thank everybody for their time and for their for their comments. And before I go to action items, I I was I just I just I was thinking about sports and some of the comments we just had. I appreciate very much the comparison, the fall sports and what we did. So I think we did do a very good job. But I just want to, I think as a board member, I I'm going to think about this as we sort of move ahead. You know, on October 1st, New Hampshire as a state had 51 cases of COVID. As of November 1st, we had 130 cases in the state of COVID. And as of December 1st, we had 772 cases. And so when we compare to fall sports, you know, the 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 community risk is is I don't know how many times that is because I'm not a math major, but it's a lot. You know, we were at 51, you know, in October 1, and now we're at 772 and climbing. And so anyway, it's it's a way to put into perspective that this isn't to say whatever everybody said was wrong. It's just I'm thinking about that because the world we live in as of December 1st is far different than the world we lived in in October 1st. And so to me, that means like the precautions and our risk management has to has to be in line with the with the reality that we're in. So anyway, with that, I'm going to move on to action items. And I would ask if there is a motion to accept for the Hopkinton School Board to accept the superintendent's recommendation to approve HMHS pre-engineering wood technology teacher Matt Christie's request for paternity leave, start date and duration to be determined by the superintendent of schools.
So moved.
Oh, we both did it. I got it first. Congratulations. Congratulations to Matt.
Yeah.
Congratulations, Norm.
So I believe the motion has been made and seconded by Angie and Rob. Is any other discussion? Lots of congratulations. Norm.
Think Norm's a great name to choose with the get no. Norm Gupel's a yes.
Seth?
Yes, yes.
Andrea.
Andrew Folsom is a yes.
Rob?
Rob NATO is a yes. Few more sleepless nights for you, Matt.
Yeah.
Brian is a yes. Congratulations. Is there a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to accept the superintendent's recommendation to approve the curriculum support positions as presented?
So moved.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Rob?
Rob NATO, yes.
Andrea?
Andrew Folsom, yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Norm?
Norm Gupel, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. Is there a recommendation? I'm sorry. Is there a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to approve the superintendent's recommendation to accept MSS special education teacher Christina? I got that right, right? I got thumbs up. Christina Christine Wooten's resignation and date determined by the superintendent of schools.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Norm?
Norm Gupel, yes.
Andrea?
Andrew Folsom, yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Rob?
Rob NATO, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. And finally, is there a motion for the Hopkinton School Board to approve the superintendent's nomination of Peter Najim, MSS special education teacher pending final approval of the superintendent start date to be to to be determined by the superintendent?
So moved.
Any discussion? Rob?
Rob NATO, yes. Welcome aboard.
Andrea?
Andrew Folsom, yes.
Seth?
Yes.
Norm?
Norm Gupel, yes.
And Jim O'Brien is a yes. So Steve, do we have a non-public or do you have a need for personnel?
I don't know if you don't.
I don't. Norm, that's a quizzical face. So I'm going to ask you, is that for something special?
Okay. I thought we had a follow up to something that.
I thought we did have a need for non-public or a non-meeting.
Yeah, well, and yeah, so I was going to suggest that we're going to have a a non-meeting on negotiations. And so
That was the look, Jim. That was the look.
Okay, you and I were on the same page, just so you know, you and I were there.
We got it. We got it. Yeah, so it's a non-meeting and not a non-public. And so so we're going to have a non-meeting on negotiations. And so I will send board members a link for that. It sounds so weird to say we're going to have a non-meeting and send you a link to a non-meeting, but that's what I'm going to do. And so with that, we will adjourn for this evening and we'll see everybody a week from today. And we'll dive back into budget. But thank you, everyone, and thank you, Mia and Juliette. Amelia, I thought you were going to be departing us and you stuck it out.
Yeah, I ended up not needing to leave.
Was so riveting. You couldn't leave.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, thanks, guys. Appreciate it. And we'll see you next week. Bye. Have a good night.
Jim, I'm not going to be at your non-meeting, so.